Good evening, everybody, and welcome to City Commission. This is our May 3, 2022 meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight. For those of you who are here for the first time, we want to thank you for coming and want to explain how we present our meetings each time. We begin with our Pledge of Allegiance, and we follow with some presentations recognizing individuals, organizations, or events. Tonight, we have five, but we have a lot of very special guests here tonight, so we're very, very thankful that we'll be able to make these presentations. It is our honor to recognize the many people who are here in the room tonight. So if I can let us all, please all stand for the pledge, and Vice Mayor, could you please lead us in the pledge tonight?
Love to, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Well done, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Moritas.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie, not present at the moment. Vice Mayor Sorensen.
Here.
Mayor Trentalis.
Here. And we have a few announcements for the agenda. Presentation four was removed. CM seven is removed from the consent agenda and is being added to the motion section of the agenda, so we won't be voting on that during the consent vote. And MP one is removed from the agenda. The folks with regard to that are unable to attend tonight. Otherwise, there are no other changes, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie, not present. Vice Mayor Sorensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda are now approved, so it's my honor and privilege to be able to offer the first presentation tonight. We have a number of people here tonight. This is with regard to USS Fort Lauderdale, that's LPD 28, and I'd ask if the following people can please come up front, and who is making the presentation tonight?
I'm happy to, Mayor. You and I can do it together, or you can do it?
Together, sure.
Do it together, great.
So first, Captain James Quarrasimo, commanding officer; Commander Robert Foster, executive officer; Crystal McFadden, crew commissioning coordinator; Jessica Kalanowski, assistant crew commissioning coordinator; and Dustin Knight, public affairs representative, along with Jesse Adams, chair of Fleet Week; Pat Dumont, chair of the USS Fort Lauderdale Commissioning Committee; and last but not least, the venerable Mayor Jack Seiler of the USS Fort Lauderdale Commissioning Committee. Please come on up, and we have a presentation to make tonight.
Correct. So, Mr. Mayor, as you come here to the middle, I just want to, if I can, real quick, just so we stay on within the protocol, we're excited to have the crew and the captain with us tonight. This presentation that you're starting with is really just welcoming them. Let's keep this separate from the next item that we have on the agenda tonight, so this is just a welcome, and thanks for being here.
So, this is a welcome and thank you for being here presentation. I noticed there's a ship here in front of us. I just want to say that I had the honor of participating in the christening of this ship several months ago, and it's big. Let me tell you something, this is a big ship. And we have with us the commander, who will share with us a few words about what it's all about, when we might be able to participate in its commissioning here in Fort Lauderdale, and a little bit about why it's called USS Fort Lauderdale.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. And first, let me say thank you for all of your support here for the men and women that will be sailing into Fort Lauderdale. First of all, you know, it is a big ship, 684 feet long, 105 feet wide, we displaced 25,000 tons, so we do have quite a large capacity there. We embark Marines as our primary weapons source, but we also have helicopters, amphibious assault craft with the Marine Corps, their team that bring, but we also have a hospital onboard, so, you know, 24 beds there, six ICU units, two dental operating rooms, so if we're called upon to conduct any humanitarian assistance stuff, we can do that as well, so we can be as compassionate as we are deadly. But with that thought, we want to have just an opportunity to say again, thank you very much. We still are, right now, the ship has been delivered, the crew has moved aboard, and here in July timeframe, we anticipate that we'll be getting underway from Pascagoula, Mississippi, where the ship's being built, and our first stop is going to be right here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. So, thank you. So, thank you so much for your support. Thank you so much for your support, and we really look forward to bringing the ship here, and I know, right now, it's Fleet Week, and you're getting the opportunity to enjoy a couple of our destroyers, but when you see her pull in, you're going to be thoroughly enjoying it.
Thank you, and I just want to take a second. To my right is Pat Dumont, who is chairing this commissioning, so I do want to recognize not only Pat, but all the members of the commissioning committee. Jesse over here to the right is also representing, but many are out in the audience, many are around town. This is a team effort, and it's been a great team effort, and we're extremely excited about this. Secondly, we want to thank the city. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, you all have been so supportive of what we're trying to accomplish here. This has been a project that we've been working on for over a decade, as you know, with the City Commission, the city manager, city staff, city attorney, tremendous support, and we really appreciate that. But I think what you really are doing is reflecting the community, reflecting the love and the appreciation and support that our community has for our U.S. Navy and the men and women who serve. And the last thing, I would just thank all the veterans in the room. I mean, obviously, I have active duty to my left, I have active duty to my right, but all of you who are active duty, all of you who are veterans, I know Heather, your husband served in the Navy, Ben, you served, I mean, so many people here have served that have been, Alan, I know, a lot of veterans, so, thank you to the veterans, thank you to active duty, because of your service and your sacrifice, we're able to do this type of event right here, this commissioning ceremony. We'll be reaching out to all of you, unrelated to this, we're doing a lot, private sector support for this project, so you'll hear more about it in the week and month ahead. Kickoff for fundraising is May 24?
It's happening.
Right, May 24. May 24, it'll be the next event we have, but again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You want to, you have any closing remarks?
Just once again, thank you very much for having us here tonight, and we just want to recognize you for all of your support, and thanks again, and we really look forward to bringing the ship here. You're going to love it.
So, next time we see you, you'll be on a ship? Maybe?
I'll be here one additional time.
Okay.
For a Navy League event, and then we're bringing the ship.
Then you're bringing the ship in, okay. Vice Mayor, do you want to share a few words?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Thank you, Captain and crew for being here. I also just want to add our gratitude for Mayor Seiler and Chuck Black for helping make this possible. Chuck's spirit is here with us, and, sir, I think he's going to be onboard that ship, protecting, guiding, comforting everyone onboard, and that is just very special for us to have the honor of this ship coming in. So, thank you, Mayor, thank you for your support.
You're very welcome. So, till next time, right?
Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks for being here, we really appreciate it. Thanks to the committee and the people that are keeping you in place here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here tonight, really appreciate it. Yeah, exactly, okay. All right, thank you. Have a good night. Very nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you, Mr. Sorenson, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Vice.
That was nice, looking forward to that. So, our next presentation, I invite Lucwin Luck, who would give a brief presentation to the Florida Department of Financial Services. There you are. Good evening. Can you speak into the mic and turn it on? Just got to press the button.
Test, test, all right, thank you very much, Mr. Solomon. Mayor, Commissioner, and the general public, thank you for this opportunity to present. For those who are not familiar with me, my name is Lucwin Luck, or most people call me Luck, so I always tell them, if you're looking for luck, you know where to find me. But basically, I have the honor and privilege to represent statewide elected official Jimmy Petronas, who is the Florida CFO, and oversees the Department of Financial Services, and he's also the chief fire marshal. So, basically, I'm here today just to inform you about the department and how we can assist, and one of the things that I hope that we, myself and the commissioner, and as well as the general public, can work together in terms of, as we know, hurricane season is upon us, and a lot of what our department does, with the Department of Financial Services, we oversee the insurance industry, so anything regarding life, home, you name it, there's 26 categories of insurance in Florida, and we want to make sure that you guys are familiar with us, because if you guys need help, I usually tell people we're like the referee of the insurance industry. So, and I'll give you a couple examples of like how that plays into it, but I did want to draw attention first to the website, because there's a lot of wealth of information in there. If you go on here, there's, you know, there's Fraud Free Florida, which is an initiative to basically combat a lot of the fraud or activities that would hurt communities, because, you know, a lot of times, we don't realize that when people are putting fraudulent claims or these activities that would drive up the cost of insurance, it drives up the price of homes, mortgages, not necessarily mortgages directly, I just want to clarify that before I give misinformation, but it does impact in terms of, when you think of finances for homeowners or this community in general, as far as rent and such and such forth. So, again, I'm not going to go into, like, all into the details and whatnot, but here's the website, it's myfloridacfo.com, again, myfloridacfo.com, and here, I just kind of want to point out, also, unclaimed property, this is something that the CFO loves to talk about and talk about, so if you, you may not even know that you have money out there, it may be because from a lost family, or you have property that you just didn't know you had, and so you go on there, click on there, and there's some information that they'll ask, and basically, anything that is, that's yours, it'll pop up in there, and then obviously, they'll guide you on how to either claim the finance or like money or whatever equivalent to receive that particular property.
And let me tell you something, it's nice to get that letter from the state, saying there's a check for $1,700 that somehow belongs to you.
Yes.
I've gotten, over the years, I've gotten a couple of those.
So, as the mayor stated, you know, sometimes we have these checks, whatever, you just didn't know, so again, I do encourage you guys to check it out. I did check, I didn't find anything for myself, but anyways, financial literacy, there's, well, I do kind of want to point out there, because when we think of, even as adults, I'll be honest with you, there are some things that we may not even think of as far as our finances, whether you're a first-time home buyer or whatnot, there's, again, there's wealth of information. Now, my contact information, because I do want to make sure I'm accessible to the community, if you go to the division, there's, let me, I'm just going to point out a few divisions, there's plenty of out there, but there's the fraud, what, insurance investigation and forensic, which is the fraud team, you have the agency, those who are involved in the insurance industry, you're probably familiar with us, no, I'm not here to, you know, come after you or to, you know, monitor you, anything like that. Again, my role is just there to be informative, just to kind of be the liaison for the community. And then also, I believe if you go, I mean, let me see here, hopefully this is up here, actually, may not be able to be there, but, because, I'll be honest with you, this is one of the critiques I would say to the department, is that, you know, this should be a little bit more user-friendly, because I was trying to find, or show you how you can get my contact information, but my contact information is on there, or just if you need to help with consumer service, in terms of if you have an issue with your insurance company or whatever, you got dropped, or if you feel like it wasn't right, or whatever case may be, or just have questions, you can go on there, there's a hotline for each division, and then also, that pretty much concludes my presentation, but I did want to note that, again, hurricane season is upon us, make sure you have your finances in order in terms of being prepared of, do you have the right insurance? Because a lot of times, people get, regardless of what type of insurance, whether it's home, auto, life, and when catastrophe happens, unfortunately, say, well, that's not covered, whatever case may be, so we just want to make sure that you guys are at least aware of that. But again, there's plenty of information I could have gone over, but I just wanted to, again, say that my name is Lucwin Luck, with the Office of Department of Financial Services, Representative Jimmy Petronas. If you need anything, I'll be here for a little bit, but it was a pleasure to speak, and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner, for having me.
Absolutely, thank you for coming tonight, we really appreciate it. So next, I would like to invite Commissioner Glassman, who will be presenting a proclamation recognizing May 5, 2022, as the 74th anniversary of Israel's independence in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Is Rabbi Noah Kitty here? Yes, she's here, from congregation Etzheim, and Rabbi David Spey, from Temple Bat Yom of East Fort Lauderdale, welcome, come on up.
Come on up, rabbis. While the rabbis are, either way, we'll go over there and take a photo, but here, because we'll say a nice proclamation. I will also let everyone know that we had the honor this evening, unfortunately, he had to leave pretty quickly to head down to Aventura, but we did have with us this evening, the Consul General, consulate of Israel, out of Miami, with us this evening, Major Elbaz Dorinsky, and we also gave him a proclamation as well, so that he could take back to the consulate and also to Israel when he returns. So, I am reading this proclamation from the office of the mayor, city of Fort Lauderdale, proclamation recognizing the 74th anniversary of the state of Israel's independence, a proclamation recognizing the 74th anniversary of the founding of the modern state of Israel, and reaffirming the bonds of close friendship and cooperation between the city of Fort Lauderdale and Israel. Whereas, on November 29, 1947, the United Nations General Assembly voted to partition the British mandate for Palestine and create a Jewish state, and whereas, on May 14, 1948, the people of Israel proclaimed the establishment of the Jewish sovereign and independent state of Israel, and the United States government was the first to recognize Israel's independence, and later established full diplomatic relations with Israel. And whereas, the desire of the Jewish people to establish an independent, modern state of Israel is an outgrowth of the historic kingdom of Israel, established in the land of Israel 3,000 years ago, with the city of Jerusalem as its capital. And whereas, for more than 2,000 years, there has been a continuous Jewish presence and residence in the lands comprising the modern state of Israel. And whereas, since its establishment 74 years ago, the modern state of Israel has rebuilt a nation, forged a new and dynamic democratic society, and created a thriving economic, political, cultural, and intellectual life for its people, despite the heavy costs of war, terrorism, and unjustified diplomatic and economic boycotts against the people of Israel. And whereas, Israel has developed an advanced entrepreneurial economy, is among the world's leaders in the high-tech industry, and is at the forefront of research and development in the field of renewable energy sources. And whereas, Israel regularly sends humanitarian aid, search and rescue teams, mobile hospitals, and other emergency supplies to help victims of disasters around the world, and has absorbed millions of Jews from other countries, and fully integrated these immigrants into Israeli society. And whereas, for over seven decades, the United States and Israel have maintained a special relationship based on shared democratic values, common strategic interests, and moral bonds of friendship and mutual respect. And whereas, for over 3,000 years, Jerusalem has played a central role in the history and identity of the Jewish people, as the location of the holiest site for the Jewish people, the Temple Mount, as well as the Western Wall, where people from around the world come to pray. And now, therefore, we, as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 14, 2022, as the 74th anniversary of the state of Israel's independence in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and recognition of the historical, religious, and cultural importance of Jerusalem, dated this, the third day of May, 2022, and signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean J. Trentalis.
To the mayor, all Commissioner Mayor, all Commissioners, and the general public, thank you very much for this wonderful, generous proclamation, this statement of friendship and connection. We hope and pray that we will continue to build our connections together, that we'll always be friends, we'll always have each other's backs, fronts, and sides, and thank you, thank you again.
Thank you, folks, for being here tonight. Commissioner Glassman, again, we have another proclamation declaring May 2022 an historic preservation month here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Is Michaela Conca here? There you are.
Thank you, Mayor. Michaela Conca, I'd like to have the board members from the Broward Trust, I think Pam Barton is here, Dave Parker, we also have Patrick Shlavlosky from the Bonnet House. Is there anyone else from any of the organizations, cultural organizations, that I missed saying? Oh my gosh, everybody, come on up, they're all coming, so here we go. We have several representatives tonight, a lot of people are here, it's wonderful, from a variety of our historical organizations in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Thank you, everyone, and we'll go to the center and get a photo as soon as we're finished. So I'd like to read this proclamation from the office of the mayor, city of Fort Lauderdale, in recognition of National Historic Preservation Month, May 2022. Whereas, the National Trust for Historic Preservation established the month of May as Historic Preservation Month in 1973, as a way to promote historic places for the purpose of fostering community pride, maintaining community character, promoting heritage tourism, and highlighting the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. And whereas, historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for residents of all ages with diverse ethnic and cultural backgrounds. And whereas, the city of Fort Lauderdale is a certified local government, which is a national program designated to encourage the direct participation of a local government in the identification, registration, and preservation of historic properties located within its jurisdiction. And whereas, the city commission has identified historic preservation as a 2022 priority, and is supported by the city's Historic Preservation Board, the Fort Lauderdale Historical Society, and the Broward Trust for Historic Preservation. And whereas, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives, and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Now, therefore, we, as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as National Historic Preservation Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale, recognizing and celebrating the value of historic preservation for the betterment of our city, dated this, the third day of May, 2022, and signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean J. Trentalis. Thank you. And before we, we're going to get a picture, but as we go, if you could just tell everyone who you are as we head over for the photo, because I think everyone needs to know what organizations you're with, and I'll meet you in the middle. Go right ahead. Name, organization, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Trentalis, and esteemed Commissioners, I'm Michaela Conca, President with Broward Trust for Historic Preservation, and I thank everybody for being here this evening.
Hello, I'm Pam Barton, and I'm on the board for Historic Preservation. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Robert Morris, and I'm here on behalf of the Naval Air Station, Fort Lauderdale Museum.
I'm Steve Buckley, on behalf of the Strain Anne House, glad to be here, thank you.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
I'm Dave Parker. I've been sailboat bin officer and working with the Fire Museum in many other capacities in preserving our history.
I'm John Bloom, and I'm here on behalf of Naval Air Station, Fort Lauderdale Museum also.
I'm Reid Tolber. I'm a local attorney. I own the old fire station on the corner of Andrews and 7th, and I'll be talking later and asking later for a discussion about creating a historic district at that intersection where the Coca-Cola plant and the local South Side School is.
I'm also a director on the Broward Trust Historic Preservation.
And my name is Patrick Shavlosky. I'm the CEO at Bonnet House Museum and Gardens.
Welcome, folks. And thank you for preserving the best of Fort Lauderdale. And now I would like to invite Vice Mayor Sorenson, who will be presenting a proclamation regarding No Place For Hate in the City of Fort Lauderdale. Is Drew Danzig here? This is Drew Danzig. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Drew, for being here with Anti-Defamation League. Have a proclamation, love to read, and then give you a chance to say some words if you like. Great. So this is in recognition of the Anti-Defamation League and No Place For Hate Day. Whereas, for more than 100 years, the ADL has broken barriers and bridged many obstacles while carrying on its mission to stop the defamation of the Jewish people and to secure justice and fair treatment to all. And whereas antisemitism in Florida is not a history lesson, it's a current event. As a 9/11, for the Jewish community in Florida, one of the largest growing populations in the U.S., the ADL of Florida offices serves as a primary resource for victims of antisemitism and discrimination. Whereas, the demand for ADL's resources and skills to help individuals and communities to confront, challenge, combat, and counteract hatred in all its forms is higher than at any time in recent memory. And I think that's true not only in Florida, I think across the country, right? We're seeing just unprecedented levels of bigotry and hatred that must stop. And whereas, No Place For Hate Day celebrates individual schools, organizations, and communities that strive to create diverse, inclusive, and equitable space. And whereas, in the spirit of unity and inclusion, the mayor of the city of Fort Lauderdale and the city commission here declare that we must commit ourselves to challenge hate wherever and whenever it manifests itself. Now therefore, we as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale hereby proclaim May 12th, 2022, as No Place For Hate Day. Signed, your mayor, Dean J. Trentalis. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Mayor Trentalis, and the entire city commission. It goes without saying that in this polarized world in which we find ourselves living, it is more important now than ever to have programs that promote anti-bias, anti-bullying, and more equitable spaces within our society. As such, the Anti-Defamation League works tirelessly every day to fight hate for good. On behalf of the ADL, I'd like to extend a thank you to all of you for proclaiming May 12th, a day of No Place For Hate Day.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So this is the portion of the meeting in which we now are going to address the consent agenda items. Thank you. The consent agenda is a list of agenda items that are voted on all at once. This is an opportunity for a member of this commission to poll one of those items if they would like to vote on it and discuss it separately. Otherwise, they will all be voted on at the same time. If, after I poll all the members of the commission, there is an item on the consent agenda that you would wish to speak about that was not polled by this commission, then I would invite you at the beginning of this process to stand over here, and I'll invite you to speak at the podium, and you can speak on any item that you wish to. So we'll start with Commissioner Moritas. Do you have any items that you'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, CP1.
CP1. And...
None.
None from Commissioner McKenzie. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
None. And Vice Mayor?
None, thank you.
Okay, so the only item we're going to be pulling is CP1. I have folks that are interested in speaking on CM1. Okay, so Mr. Corbin, you would like to speak on CM1?
This is regarding motion approving applications for temporary beach licenses and outdoor event agreements.
That's right. Beach concerts and events in South Florida are attracting people who steal cell phones. A group of three thieves were found with two dozen stolen phones during last month's Tortuga Festival. This is just the tip of the iceberg. More stolen phones were found in the possession of a thief at last weekend's Sunfest concert. Most phones require a password. If you don't have the password, then they're only good for parts. It seems like the local police don't want to track down the thieves. Walmart has a machine that looks like an ATM, which pays cash for any cellphone, even if you don't have the password, though it pays much less money for a phone without the password. The company, EcoATM, holds any phone it gets from their 5,000 nationwide machines for 30 days before parting them out. They use the phone's IMEI number, which is physically written inside the phone next to the battery to identify the phone. Anyone can contact them to check for their phones using the IMEI number. My phone was stolen last month after someone smashed my truck's window. The Wilton Manners Police only asks for the phone's serial number, not the IMEI number. The serial number is impossible to see unless someone has the phone's password. I tracked the phone to an EcoATM machine at Walmart on Broward Boulevard, and a Fort Lauderdale police officer named Chris Carita helped me get my phone back, but he never wrote a police report. Even though we have the name, address, fingerprints, and photos of the thief from the EcoATM machine, the police won't go after him, which only encourages thieves to continue making easy money. EcoATM pays four ex-cops to help make millions of dollars from stolen phones. Why wait for a violent incident between potentially armed thieves and concert attendees? It's bound to happen sooner or later. You will decrease the demand for stolen phones if you arrest people who drop off these phones at Walmart. Hopefully, we can look into this, and I'm still waiting for that police report from the Fort Lauderdale cops. Is there any way we can get that?
You'll probably have to call them, because I have no jurisdiction over the Fort Lauderdale cops, so what?
Well, Wilton Manners has been calling them for the last couple of weeks. They talked to an IA sergeant, and they still aren't getting it.
Boyd, if you go see the chief, he'll be happy to talk to you.
I planned on doing that.
Good, he's right there.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, now let me just ask you a question, Mr. Corbin. Are you for or against the item? Because you did not speak to the item. Are you for or against CM1?
Well, at this point...
Just a simple yes or no?
I'm against it because people are going to get hurt when the thieves go there and try to steal cell phones.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
CP1. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes, thank you. Let's see, I just needed some clarification from Phil. Phil, a couple of questions. You can stay there or come up?
This is regarding a motion approving an agreement for water sports activities?
Yes. Phil, I just wanted clarification, just for the record. We have problems in District 1 with jet skis from rental companies that are operated without a guide. So this, I just want to confirm, just for the public and people who had questions at my District 1 meeting last night, that this operator will be a guided jet ski operator.
It's probably better to have Glenn from procurement do that. I could answer that, but he's the one that knows the scope much better than I, and I don't want to misspeak to the scope of the...
And then one last question. Will this only, will this vendor only operate at George English, or will they also operate at different places throughout the city?
This will operate out of George English Park.
Out of George English, okay. Do we have other jet ski rental companies at different locations throughout the city?
There is the one on the beach that...
But that's in the ocean, right?
We have a vendor on the beach that we have, and then there's also one that operates out of Birch State Park.
Okay, so I'm just thinking where the jet skis would go. So the beach jet skis would operate in the ocean?
Yeah, so there's probably other operators in the city that, you know...
Are private?
Yeah, that are private, that use all, you know, the waters, all kinds of waters around the city. But those are the only three that I'm aware of that the city, you know, is either part of or...
Okay, so if our neighbors see jet skis and they seem like they might be someone not familiar with them, some possibly a jet ski rental company, I guess it's safe to say that they could be from a different jet ski vendor not related to the city of Fort Lauderdale, and they could operate without a tour guide?
They could, and it could be a private individual.
Right, it could be. Sure, of course, it could be a private person.
Correct.
But it seems like some of them, most of the problems I get are mostly rentals, maybe through someone that seems like a familiar jet ski, or someone bringing them into our public ramps on a truck with, and then, you know, from TripAdvisor or whatever, and renting them out?
Yeah, it could very well be, and I know the Marine Patrol patrols the water quite a bit and deals with the operators that are out of the area that they should be in, or they're improperly operating the ones that, you know...
Okay, so that's the marine industry, checking into that. But at George English, if we notice somebody coming with, let's say, six jet skis on the back of their truck and putting them in the water, that is no longer allowed because we're picking one vendor, correct? To operate at George English?
They are not allowed to run a business out of the park.
They're not allowed, so if we...
If they're bringing, if it's a mom and pop and they're bringing jet skis for their family or their friends to ride on, then they can definitely do that. But business cannot operate out of the park without our permission.
Okay, so what should neighbors do if they happen to see a possible business operating kind of on a regular basis out of George English with the jet skis? I mean, is it, call 828-8000?
They could call 828-2000. We're aware of the concern out there now. We have dealt with them, the Park Rangers have dealt with them, Marine Patrol has dealt with them probably more than anyone. So they can call 8,000, and then 8,000 number would then find someone, whether it's code enforcement or the police or whatever, if they in fact believe someone is operating a business out of a park.
Okay, so those are just a couple of other of the issues surrounding this one particular item that we will continue to work on. But thank you, you can answer my question then, I guess, about, it doesn't alleviate the other jet skis that'll be operating throughout the city without a guide, and I guess some private rentals, but you can confirm that this one particular operator, as at Blue Moon, will be operated guided jet skis?
So Glenn Markle's chief procurement officer, the answer is yes. The guided tours was part of the scope of the RFP.
Okay, super. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is it one, like, person or group that's coming to this park every weekend and violating these rules? I mean, do we have a...
I don't know exactly, it just seems that it's ongoing.
Is somebody fingered this group?
It seems like it's more than just one group.
Okay, I thought it was like one...
Well, it seems like there was maybe an operator across the street, and they were operating out of a business front, and then they came in and they put some jet skis in the water. It seems like we came up with this process so that we could pick one operator and we can regulate them, as opposed to allowing just numerous people to put the jet skis in the water at George English. So there's just a big problem on Middle River.
Okay.
And then obviously you can go around the corner to the Intercoastal 2, but that body of water is not that big, and I've seen the reckless jet skis operating on the Middle River also, and I just get a lot of concerns from neighbors. So we'll stay on it. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I have a gentleman, Brian Galt, and is he here? Ah, there you are. This gentleman would like to speak on this item. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners, city managers, teams. I can answer some of those questions for you. There's probably about eight companies operating out of George English Park, operating jet skis. There's also a company right there at the Doubletree Hotel, operating right where the water taxi is, and there's another jet ski company that goes out of the beach where Hugh Birch State Park is. So there's quite a few of them. By the way, my name is, I'm Brian Galt, and I'm with Sunrise Powderboards. I take great pride in being ambassador for the city, and I love this city, but I am in opposition of this concession. I've written each of you a letter, I emailed it to you, as well as I hand, you know, mailed them to you. I'm a little disappointed I didn't get a reply, and I would love to know if any of you actually read that letter. I do have a copy of it, if any of you guys are interested in reading the letter. Nonetheless, I'm going to try to cut through what I wrote in the letter. You guys have a lot of duties, many responsibilities, some of them of equal importance, can affect the city financially, including this. However, there is another thing that is more important here, which I'm talking about life and death. We all know that Fort Lauderdale has been known for its over 165 miles of waterways, making it a great place to go boating. While the stats for 2021 are not available, I would like to state that the FWC boaters courses emphasize that Florida ranks number one in the country in boating accidents, and of those, over 50% of them are from jet skis or PWCs. I am here today after learning of how your system, or our system, has failed. It has failed to do exactly what we are discussing, which is to make a smart, intelligent, and safe decision. These decisions should be based on experience, but did our committee do its job to properly rank the proposers? I am one of the proposers, and I'm here to tell you, they did not. In 2019, Palm Beach Post Florida boating statistics, Florida leads the nation when it comes to boating accidents with 800, excuse me, 679 recorded accidents in 2019, and according to the U.S. Coast Guard, 55 of those were fatal. The top five factors for contributing to these accidents are operator inattention, improper lookout, operator inexperience, excessive speed, and alcohol. Sadly, in 2020, those numbers increased to 863 accidents, 79 deaths, 534 injuries, and it should be noted that a reportable boating accident involves injury, death, or over $2,000 of property damage. With that in mind, there are hundreds of incidents that do not get reported. These statistics show a significant increase in boating accidents. If you ever need a reminder about the severity of boating accidents, this is your warning. So how do we get these statistics down? The answer should be obvious. Look at the top five contributing factors. Alcohol and excessive speeds are obviously voluntary actions that you and I have minimal control, but let's take a look at the others and how this correlates to the RFP.
Sir, sir, your three minutes are up, and I guess, can you just summarize it at this point?
Yeah, I really didn't know I only had three minutes. The RFP was done based upon a weighted criteria, which you only gave five of the criteria questions. Each of those criteria, you rank the five proposers, and I'm one of the five. Blue Moon, the one that was awarded, was, the way it works is you get... Blue Moon, the one that was awarded, was, that the way it works is you get one point if you're the best, and five points if you're the worst. Blue Moon was able to get a number one score with no experience in jet skis. They're actually subcontracting it out, and according to that RFP, you're supposed to have three years of experience, and it says the proposer needs to have three years of experience.
Mayor.
Not a subcontractor.
Mayor. Yes.
I don't, well, uh, we have a bid protest procedure, and they did not avail themselves of that, so this is not a proper.
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask that. Sir, there is a protest procedure, and there's a timeframe within which it should be submitted, and I guess that's the way we got to handle that. Uh, I apologize, but we can't, you know, consume the entire evening with this, so there is a way to do it, please contact the city attorney's office.
I understand there is a bid policy protest, but also as, since you're going to approve of this, you should note that they have to have three years of experience and they have none.
Okay.
And that's the reason for the accident, is experience.
All right, thank you.
By the way, we, how, how did they get a number one ranking in that with no experience? Makes no sense at all. I have 10 years of.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Mayor, I do just want to say, for the record, I, I do track all the emails I get from constituents and neighbors, and you included, and I keep them all in a folder and I read them, and I did have the city manager and the city attorney get back to you. So please don't say that we ignored you on that one, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just before you take action, for the record, we do believe that we had a legitimate procurement process, it was solid, it was sound, it followed all policies and procedures, and anything that you heard tonight, we do not believe has any impact on the outcome of that, of that individual procurement, and we feel it's appropriate for you to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, move the item. Do I need to?
Uh, are you, do you have any objection to CP one being approved?
No.
Okay, so we're just going to go, we're just going to, uh, move all this, all the consent agenda items.
Okay, thank you.
Once then. Would someone like to move the consent agenda items?
Move second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and all the consent agenda items are now approved. M1, motion approving an event agreement and request for music exemption for opulence, District Two. Anyone have any questions with regard to this?
I, I do have some comments, Mayor, if I might.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, we had a discussion about this at my pre-agenda meeting last evening. Couple of questions, maybe Phil or someone else can help with that. I first would just remind everyone that we've had some issues with the rooftop garage, La Solas Garage area with sound and noise traveling. It's been an issue for a lot of the surrounding neighbors, so I always do pay attention to the items that are listed for happening in that site. I know that we are reevaluating, um, protocols for having events on the rooftop of the La Solas Garage. Um, we're in the middle of that now, but we are processing everything that's come through up until the point where we decided to reevaluate. I have a couple of concerns with this one. First of all, this is, it's listed as a brunch, but it goes till 10:00 PM at night. Now, I've been to some brunches in my day, but that's, that's a brunch. I mean, uh, when you have a brunch that goes till 10:00 PM.
It's a smorgasbord.
That's a, you know, that's a brunch, a 10-hour brunch, it looks like it's a 10-hour brunch, that's a brunch. Um, so I have a concern because it's asking for a special exemption. It's asking for a special exemption to have amplified music on a Sunday night till 10:00 PM, when our regulations say 9:00 PM for amplified music. So I would say 9:00 PM is still a good hour, good hour to end a brunch, um, but, uh, so I'm not so much in favor of the extra hour, uh, for the exemption for the amplified music for this event. And I also wanted just to make sure that, um, everything else looks just fine, so, uh...
Is, is the applicant here tonight?
Same guy.
Come on up, sir.
Right.
Now you'll learn how to.
Right.
Really throw a brunch.
That's right. And, and I was going to ask Phil, I, I don't think we received any, no problems last year, right? I mean, you can tell us yourself, right? Everything went well last year?
Yeah, good afternoon, my name is Marvin McKenzie, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner.
Any, any relationship?
Yeah.
We had this conversation last year.
Yes, yes we did.
And he's my first cousin.
It bears repeating.
He's my first cousin.
Okay.
So that is not true. I do not know him, I met him last year when he came with the event, and, and the commissioner from District Two was questioning him, and he came and answered and satisfied all the questions. Hopefully tonight he has all the answers and we'll, we'll get past this, but we can act like cousins.
So last year, um, the event, I did get approved to go until 10:00.
Um, at 9:00 PM, we actually turned the music down, it's just like a wind down, you know, to get out of the venue, up until 10 o'clock. And the reason why it goes so late, you know, people come and go throughout the evening, and then we have to set up for the event also, so it takes some time. So that's the only reason why I asked for 10 o'clock, because last year we had no issues with noise, no one complained, or made any complaints about that.
Right, well, the, it's still a 10, the setup is 9:45 AM till noon, it says on the application.
Yeah, but I can't start that early.
Excuse me?
I think I can't start that early, it's something that goes on in the morning there before, so I have to set up a little bit later.
Okay, it says set up 9:45 AM till noon, and it says the event is, um, till.
Breakdown.
Ten, yeah, breakdown is 10 until 1:00 AM, and it says the amplified music is 2:00 till 10:00 PM. Um, and it says the actual, so that seems like to be the timeframe on the application. How many people attended last year?
Um, not too many, maybe like 100, 120 people.
120, and was the $40 charge the same last year as this year, per person?
It's, it's a little bit less this year, yeah.
Wow, how much was it last year?
I think it was 40 last year.
It says 40 this year.
Yeah, this year I have it as, as 20.
Really? Okay, it says 40.
It's 40.
So that's not true?
That's, that's like, um, at the door, it's 20 pre-sold before you get there. If you get there, like, if you didn't purchase a ticket before, then it's 40 on entry.
Okay, and it says that you're expecting, um, 300 people with a sustained attendance of 250 people.
Yeah, hopefully.
Throughout the day.
Yes, hopefully.
Okay, I, I, again, folks, I'm just telling you, I know that residents in and around the area would appreciate if the amplified music on a Sunday could end at 9:00, not 10:00.
I think we made that rule because of that reason? I mean, unless it was an exceptional need.
Do you still plan on, on, for this event, to turn it down at 9:00 PM? Is that still a plan, like you did last year?
Yeah, that's, that's the plan, because you know.
That's the plan.
I want to keep a good relationship, you know, I want to keep doing this, I've been working with you guys since 2019.
Okay, great.
Right.
You'll turn it way down, or cut it down at 9:00 PM?
Way down.
Okay. And one other, can I ask one other question? Sorry?
Go ahead, no, sure.
Um, Phil, what, um, and, and I don't know, Phil, you're the right person to ask this, but, uh, in setting up, can he, can he start setting up at 9:45? Is there something preventing him from turning it up then?
The only thing I would know is if there's something going on, that Ari may be doing some, some yoga or something under, but if, if, if the application's at 9:45.
Yeah, he should be.
The operations committee.
I don't, there should not be an issue. Yeah, so you should be good at 9:45 to start all you need to do.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to clear that up, too.
Okay, good. Um, no, thanks, I wish you a wonderful event, and I, I just hope that it's true that at 9:00 PM you can maybe just wind down the amplified music. I'm sure the neighbors will be very appreciative on a Sunday evening for that.
I will, thank you.
No, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Glassman, I do support whatever you want to do moving forward to get our arms around this a little bit more, maybe not your event in particular today, but, I mean, amplified music right across the street from all those neighborhoods, I mean, what happens when the La Solas Marina starts having music outside? Or we're kind of like dueling bands up here between the rooftop and the, you know, ground floor, and I don't, it's just the, I, I, I would just say acoustic music, I mean, just like a, a guy on a guitar or something, I mean, amplified music, just shouting from the rooftop, I don't know, I'm not a big fan of it.
Well, um, I, the good news is, there are just a few applications that are in the pipeline, so they are going through, and then staff is reevaluating all of this, um, in terms of, you know, usage for that space up there, but.
When we say 300 people, where do they park? They park on the second floor, and then they walk up to the rooftop to have the party, and there's no parking out there, or is it like a tailgate out of your trunk, or what's going on?
The very top, there is no parking up there.
There's no parking?
No.
I thought it went up there, I thought there's a little green stuff and.
There is, but there's parking.
But it's like on that slope part.
But it's still up there.
Yeah, but it's not.
Before they hit the.
The green stuff.
Yeah, before you hit the part of.
Where do we limit, where do we stop the parking? Or do you park all the way up there, too?
Yeah, but.
Do you put 300 people on that little green space?
Yeah, but I think when you go to the beach, every, every weekend, it's like thousands of people out there, they, they figure out where to park, I mean, uh, I don't think that's the issue.
I don't know, I just, I, I think it's a little, it's a little much.
We just had the airshow, it was like, how many people, Mayor?
Thousands.
Thousands.
I know, but it's not on top of a parking garage.
Yeah, but we went to a location on the beach.
There's a lot of sand.
I'm just saying.
All right, but that brunch was over at 3:00 PM.
Yeah, and we.
The fighter jets stopped flying by.
I mean, the elbow room has.
After 3:00.
200 people, where do they park?
Well, they, they don't park, that's my point, I'm wondering, are we fighting with cars and people?
No, I don't think, I, I don't think it's, I think the retuning is, is, is what we're hearing from the residents, and we'll retune it under the auspices of that district commissioner.
Yeah, and the good news is.
I don't want to overdo it.
No, and Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, we had no issues last year, right, with this event? Same event, right?
Yeah.
And everything was good.
I just think this could get a little.
No, he, he, see, last year, the commissioner called him out, but.
Yeah.
And he's consistent with it, and he met all of the criterias, he came back with no incidents, and he wants to do it again, and we were just wondering why the tickets went down, I might get a couple of those things.
Yeah.
Bugs, I couldn't afford that, yeah.
In advance, in advance.
I, I don't see that $20 in advance as a ticket price, but that's.
It's a special offer tonight.
We need that in writing.
Maybe this time you'll go, right?
Yeah.
It's a good brunch.
You gotta buy it in advance.
I told you, I love a 10-hour brunch.
It's in advance.
I'm happy moving this. I, but.
All right, someone has, all right, come on, let's move on.
All right, I'm moving the item.
You need to look at it.
Moving it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Has it been seconded?
Second.
Yeah, twice.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
You know, I'm going to vote for this tonight, but I just want everybody to know going forward, whether it be this event or any other event, I'm not going to agree to it after 9:00 PM. Amplified music exception, there's absolutely no reason why it has to be. I mean, you can have a good time until 9:00 PM, and especially on a Sunday, especially right across the street from, you know, residential areas, I just, I just think it's, 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 um, you know, we try to maintain a quality of life in this city, and I just don't see anything happening between 9:00 and 10:00 that's going to make any difference to any event, especially since it starts in the morning.
Well, Mayor, that's why we are revisiting the entire issue.
Okay, all right.
And that's why he's turning it down at 9:00. Thought we got both of those.
Well, even still, you know, okay, um, I, I, I vote in favor of that motion. Okay, motion's approved, good luck with it, I hope you have a great time, where are you? Where'd you go? Oh, there you are, okay. Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight. Uh, neighbor, neighbor presentations, so before we do the neighbor presentation.
Mayor, before you get there, we have that one item we moved from CM seven to the.
Oh, yeah, 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 uh.
It'll just be heard as a motion, it's.
Was that CR seven?
At CM seven?
CM seven. Motion approving the interim agreement for Prospect Lake Clean Water Center.
I can tell you quickly, Mayor, what this is, we were in receipt of the unsolicited proposal for the water plant, this is an interim agreement that allows access to both the Prospect Well Field as well as the Five Ash Plant, so they can continue to do, um, testing and some sampling up at the well field to make sure that everything works as they anticipated based on what they proposed.
Okay, do we have to make disclosures for this?
It's not quasi-judicial.
Okay, all right. So this was, item was moved from the consent agenda.
Oh, it is moved.
To an, to a motion, so it's been moved? Did someone move?
Second.
Moved?
I, I was just asking why this was moving from consent.
Because we typically do not put these interim agreements on the consent motion, this one happened to end up on the consent motion by accident, and it should have been more appropriately discussed, rather than just, uh, on the consent motion.
So does anyone have any questions regarding the item?
No.
Okay, someone like to move the item?
Moved.
It's been moved, do I hear a second? Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
No.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, so that item is approved. Neighbor presentations, so this afternoon, um, the commission at the conference meeting considered some, um, ideas about neighbor presentations, and, um, there was a consensus going forward about new rules and regulations regarding neighbor presentations. So tonight, we're going to hear from, uh, five individuals who have signed up to speak, uh, during the segment of the meeting. But going forward, um, the new rules have now been established. The first rule is that in order to be able to speak at the city commission of Fort Lauderdale, you have to be a Fort Lauderdale resident. Secondly, you'll be permitted to speak, but only once per quarter, so that every three months you would have the ability to speak. And the neighbor presentations will alternate between the conference meeting and the regular meeting. So one week we'll have it at the conference meeting, and the next week we'll have it at the, uh, regular meeting.
Month.
Month, excuse me, not week, month, I'm sorry, correct, thank you. Uh, so it'll be alternating months, so one month we'll do it in the evening, and one month we'll do it in the conference meeting. So again, it'll be once per quarter, and you have to be a Fort Lauderdale resident. So those are the new rules, and, uh, hopefully we can achieve some efficiencies in these meetings going forward. Mary Furtig, are you here in the room? Mary Fertig, are you here in the room?
She's my person.
She's not here? Oh, okay. So we have four neighbor presentations tonight. Boyd, huh? Is she okay?
No, I'm saying the presentations keep dropping off.
Oh, okay. Boyd Corbin, NP2, drinking water from Five Ash Water Treatment Plant. This is your last presentation, unless you want to move to Fort Lauderdale, we welcome you to move to Fort Lauderdale.
Well, they still have green water in Fort Lauderdale, you fool.
Go ahead.
Last month, I had city drinking water from Five Ash sampled and tested outside my home by a certified lab. EPA Safe Water Regulations require total trihalomethanes to be below 80, but my water tested at 257. Chloroform tested at 189. Promodichloromethane, which causes fetal retardation and miscarriages, tested at 50, which is clearly unacceptable. Adding ammonia to our drinking water and not filtering the water well enough are the reasons for these high readings of toxic chemicals. Your solution of nearly doubling our water bills by having a private company build and maintain a new water treatment plant has been shot down by Reese Engineering, which has worked with this city for 30 years and recommends rebuilding Five Ash in less than half the time, at less than half the cost. The Reese method would save 6 million gallons of water per day, and would be much cheaper to operate. Reese says that ammonia would not be needed to pass EPA Safe Water Tests. The Fort Lauderdale Infrastructure Task Force Committee, the Aaron Brockovich Foundation, and several other engineers are strongly against building a new water treatment plant next to the Executive Airport, since that is four miles away from the water distribution pipes, that's just one of the reasons. The city's engineering consultant, Hazen and Sawyer, have not even been asked to review the Corolla report. Lyle Muntz, the engineer who wrote the Corolla engineering report, which the proposed new plant is based on, seems to be the only one in favor of moving Five Ash. Next week, the Florida Board of Professional Engineers Probable Cause Board will review the Corolla report, and Mr. Muntz might lose his engineering license, since his report is full of so many intended mistakes. Five Ash employees reached out to the Aaron Brockovich Foundation and told them about massive theft at Five Ash. The city decided to demolish Five Ash four years ago. The public is not allowed into public meetings at Five Ash concerning contracts. It's obvious that you just want to destroy any evidence of this theft. The commission has had four years to fix the drinking water consumed by 250,000 people. Now with six months left, just before leaving, you want to commit to another unsolicited bid from lobbyist Stephanie Toothacre to screw up our drinking water for the next 30 years.
Thank you, sir, your three minutes.
Our other two unsolicited bids are strongly opposed by the vast majority of residents.
Thank you, thank you so much.
The EPA took water samples from the Fort Lauderdale distribution system last month. The results will be out at the end of the week.
Okay, thank you, sir. Handy Levy, City Development Permit and Inspections, Handy, are you here? There you are. Come on up. Is this your first time speaking here? Welcome to the City Commission meeting. Something tells me you had a situation with our permitting inspections.
First of all, I want to start by thanking you for.
Please speak into the microphone.
I want to thank you for the beautiful arts that you put in Fort Lauderdale. I love your Instagram page, very good. And your assistant, Zachary, who is he?
He's upstairs.
He's absolutely amazing, I never met him, but make me feel like I'm his sister.
I taught him everything he knows.
Tell him, please, I'm so thankful for him and everything that he did for me.
Thank you, it's very nice of you to say.
Start my presentation right now, I want to, oh, okay, I forgot the mic. I want to start by telling you first who I am. I am Licensed Community Association Manager. I'm working on large project as a concrete restorations. Now I'm working in North Miami Beach on Dorset House. I'm helping the community to fix and the violation with the city and with the county. So I have a big knowledge about concrete. I also, me and my husband own H&amp;M Housing and Land Development, we are developers, we build in new construction homes. Most of the time we buy land, and sometime we have to buy a home and tear it down. So I deal a lot with the permitting department, and I want to, it's hurt me to be a resident of Fort Lauderdale and trying to invest and get my back turned by, and you're gonna understand what, in the rest of my presentation, why I'm here today. We're building, those are the style of the houses that Bill building, obviously they're very ugly. But the quality of work that we bring into the, to the city, the beautiful, and it's very important that we have those quality work buildings and place to have people living in secure, nice homes right now, especially with all the hurricane seasons. What happened, it's too horrific.
So what are we, what are we getting, I'm trying to figure out, what is the, what is the issue you want to bring up tonight?
I'm gonna bring two issue. Is one with the engineering department, and one with the inspectors of the city of Fort Lauderdale, that I would love see a change, and change in those department. For example, which I have here, all the comments that I received when I fight for approving my plans, like, they force me for number one, hire a company to have a lateral, a sewer lateral on the road, which I had to fight really hard and proving them that there is no need because it's existing, a sewer lateral there, which you can imagine what it will cause to the project. My concern is why the city does not know all the things before they delay plan, before they not approving plan, why I have to fight so hard with the permitting department. Number two, my husband had built a driveway. This is the driveway before they make us demolish this driveway.
Can I give her some suggestions, mayor? Is that right?
Well, I, I was gonna let her just finish, and then I was gonna introduce her to Mr. Farhada.
Yeah, I think that'd probably be best doing it now. So the head of our building is the guy right there, the, the nice guy. So he's gonna be the most helpful to kind of talk through with us.
No, no problem.
And answer, he'll, he'll be able to answer a lot of your questions.
Definitely, and Zachary was really involved in this whole, whole thing, but I just want to finish this little point about the driveway.
Okay.
So that was the driveway before they make us demolish it. The inspector had a, a personal issue with my husband that we're not gonna get into. My problem is, I presented to the city, here is a letter from an engineering firm well-known in Miami, Optimus Engineering. Structural engineer informed, they told them, there is no reason to demolish this. I'm a structural engineer. And regardless to all the fight that I put, regardless to your assistant Zachary fight, they decide, I'm disappointment from, my big disappointment is from the leadership that came to meet with me in the project site. They could have resolved this issue so easy, and they did not. And what I would like to see a change before somebody makes somebody demolish something so serious, this is thousands of thousands of dollar of work. The inspector is not a structural engineer person. He's not qualified to do that. He doesn't have a backup of.
Okay, all right, ma'am, so I, I'm sure there's a lot to be said on this subject, but your, your time is up, and Mr. Farh. Mr. Farhada, who's sitting over there in the gray suit, he'll be happy to talk with you.
Yes.
And try to see if we can work through these issues, all right? I apologize for your.
No, 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 I understand.
I apologize for your experiences, it's not typical for our city to hear this, in fact, we hear a lot of very positive experiences, but something happened, and we, and we regret that it happened. So Mr. Farhada would be happy to talk with you.
Yeah, I will appreciate if your staff or whoever, commissioner will pay a little bit more attention to the small businesses, the small development, and make us feel welcome at the city and important, as Zachary make me feel, you know, and make me feel like a family, that's all what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Let's just make that change.
And then, and then one other person that could be helpful to you is Alan Dodd, is, Alan, if you could just raise your hand, so he oversees public work, so sewers, water, all that stuff.
I definitely will talk to him.
Yeah.
Great opportunity, thank you guys for all the work.
Zachary will be the new head of the building department next week.
Yeah, Zachary, have you gotten a raise recently, or what's, it sounds like?
Shh. I do want to make one point.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to raise the issue, but I want to talk about what I've been talking about, which is the laterals. For some reason, all of a sudden, we've been talking to Alan, we've been talking with city manager about why all of a sudden, the onus of the lateral locate now is being put on contractor or the resident trying to connect to, to our infrastructure. In every city, that's the responsibility of the city to, to have a place for you to hook up to. And now, in my conversations, we are making that responsibility of the owners, and we're, we're charged to do it. We've had some cases in the CRA where we were able to fix it, but there are others around town, and this is happening more and more, and we made people get rid of septic tanks, hook up to our sewer. So it is, if we want everybody hooked up, we have to have access for them to hook up. We're now saying, you gotta go into our infrastructure, provide that point of contact for your public piece. But I really don't feel comfortable with people working on our infrastructure, especially now. It's one thing for me to come from my home, Dean, to our infrastructure, but when you ask me to put the lateral there, or that, that connect, and I would like for us to come back at some point and talk about it.
The lateral is on the property owner's property, correct?
Well, there's two pieces, there's one that sits on the structure itself.
Right.
Which you gotta hook up to.
Right.
That's, that's us. You bring your piece from your home.
Bring your piece to the, to the, to the city line in the street.
Now we're saying, Alan, can you come, come up here a second, and then we don't have to do it now?
Because I just had that done recently, and it's not cheap.
No, because you don't know what, what you paid for, because you're just writing the check.
Thank.
You're not in, in the weeds, but folks are calling us.
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
And for some reason, recently, this is happening more and more. And I would like to see us take us another look at it, because I think it's a policy issue, am I correct?
Yes, mayor commissioners, the city used to do the installation of the lateral connection, and it was within ordinance, people would pay, I believe it was around $6,500 for each site, and then the city had crews that would go in and put the lateral connection up to the property line. And around 2016, 2017, I, I believe is when the, the ordinance was changed, where we no longer provided that service, and it was placed on the, the developers to do those connections, and it was being permitted. And as part of that, we eliminated the crews that were within Public Works that performed those services. And so the, the fix that we've been talking with the commissioner would be to reverse that ordinance change, to create the program again, and then we would have to resource it with people and equipment to, to meet the demand.
Okay. All right, well, we can revisit that, but.
You coming back with that?
Yes, commissioner.
Thank you for, thank you for explaining.
Because right now, we got people like me and you going out there messing with our infrastructure.
Well, I'm just wondering, does that apply just to new development?
That, that is to all developments, if you're built, if you're doing something that will require installation of a lateral.
Right.
And, and the reason that.
Like, let's say you have, let's say you have an old lateral.
Yeah.
And it has to be replaced.
That the $6,500 wasn't covering the expense that it costs for, for doing it. The work actually could cost, depending on where the, the main pipes are in the street, it would be $20,000 to $30,000 in some situations. So, so that's why it was changed.
Both on residential and commercial?
It was changed for, for all.
I mean, commercial, I can live with something different, but residential, you're connecting, everyone should have access to our sewer system, since we came up with the idea that you must come online. And if there's no access, I could put a septic tank in the backyard.
Well, that would be, so the question is, who's gonna bear that expense?
But we were bearing it one time, and then, then we changed it. Policy-wise, I don't know who did that, but it was done in 16.
Well, it was us that we did it.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, us and who, who, who was in charge of doing it, who made the policy change? I don't remember having a conversation about that.
It was the previous commission that voted on it, so, and I was part of that commission, as was you.
Right, but I don't remember having a conversation about that piece, is what I'm saying.
Probably not.
So I, I would like to revisit.
I'll be on the consent agenda.
I would like to revisit it, I think it's.
I know, but I can just imagine the expense, though. A lot of it had to do, if I'm, and I think this is part of the philosophy, a lot of the, a lot of that had to do with the fact that the banks owned hundreds of houses, and we put the burden on the banks to, to supply that lateral connection to the city sewage, because we did not want, because all those houses were coming off of foreclosures. And, and there was a huge burden on the city's end, and we felt that the banks could, could sustain the expense more than the city should. I think that was kind of what, what turned the philosophy back.
And I appreciate, I, I want us to have a workshop on it.
Yeah.
And talk about it, and we can go back and see if that was the reason, because 2016, I think the housing market had turned, I'm not trying to overturn your, your memory of it, but this is, this is critical to, 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 to our industry.
I know.
You know, if you want to flush, you know, pay the hookup, then go hook up to the hookup. I mean, that's just not in my.
Chris, maybe you can do a little research on the.
I can, yeah, I don't have, I, I don't know how it.
It's with Mr. Fel.
Funny that you brought it up.
I'm not talking about you, but that's a good example of what we're talking about.
The driveway is your own thing, do like Commissioner Sorensen said, you know, get with Anthony and those, they'll, they'll help you, but this other piece, I think, is our issue.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Alan.
Thank you, sir.
Barbara Markley, are you here? Oh, there you are, hey, Barbara. Thank you for your patience.
Hello.
Good evening.
It's so nice to see you guys again, I'm really happy to be here. I am from the League of Women Voters of Broward.
And you need to speak into the microphone.
Okay, I'm from the League of Women Voters of Broward, the Gun Safety Committee, I don't know where to put this. And we are a nonpartisan organization, we've been around 100 years, and we started a project in 2018 called Lock It Up to encourage people to lock up their guns to protect children and prevent suicide and reduce crime. Because most people don't know that of the 45,000 gun deaths every year, two-thirds are suicides. A lot of those decisions are made impulsively, in as little as five minutes sometimes, and that if the gun is locked up, then people may change their mind. The other thing is that 10 children are unintentionally shot every day, and for the first time in our country's history, guns are now the leading cause of death for children and teens in our country. So locking up guns makes a big difference, it protects children, and it reduces suicide, and the other thing you may not know is that it reduces crime. A gun is stolen every 26 minutes in Florida, and those guns are used to commit crime. So if you lock up your guns, you are, I got my shirt here, you are protecting children, reducing crime and preventing suicide. And I come bearing gifts, I have gun locks.
I thought she was gonna say I have a gun.
Gun locks provided by the Veterans Administration. If anyone has a gun that needs locking up, or knows anybody and wants to talk to them about locking up their gun to protect everybody, I have free gun locks, I also have a little piece of paper that has a quiz with questions about gun safety that you may not know, and you could take the quiz if you're bored and would like to be a whiz kid on gun safety. And also, I wanted you to know that we are available to go to any business church, festival, or anything to talk about gun safety and give away gun locks. We've given away 17,000 gun locks so far, and I like to think that we've protected a lot of lives. Thank you.
Well, great, thank you, thank you so much.
And thank you for coming out last year to, to my pre-agenda meeting, it went over well, and I would like to get with you, maybe you can come out to, finally Friday, May 20th, set up a booth, and I'm, we'll have thousands of people, and I'm sure some of them have guns.
We will go anywhere.
I hold you to it, because I really enjoyed what you gave in terms of education and the physical lock being handed to those persons that wanted to lock up those guns.
Right, we really want to protect kids, and we want to help people, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah, thank you, Barbara, in the past, you've shared some information with us, Barbara, that we could put in our newsletters, did you do that again this year? Yeah, we'd be happy to share it again this year.
I'd like to leave these quizzes in case anyone wants one. And then should I just leave some gun locks?
You, you can, Vaughn, get some for, for our district, and he's gonna take your car, because we're gonna invite you on May 20th to set up a booth, and we're gonna keep this thing moving. Put on my motorcycle.
Okay, thank you, Jen.
Reed Tolber, Reed, are you here?
Good evening.
Good evening again.
I'm here to seek the support of the city for the formation of an historic district called the Hardy Park Historic District. Right now, Fort Lauderdale has three historic districts, Sailboat Ben Historic District, the Hemmershy Avenue Historic District, and the Stranahan District. I am seeking the support of the commission for the formation of a district at an intersection where a building I own, the South Side Fire Station, exists in proximity to three other, two other historic buildings, all at the same intersection. That's the intersection of 7th Street and South Andrews. That's the high school, the Coca-Cola plant, and the fire station.
Is that fire station a law office now?
Yes, it is, it's my law office, and it's occupied by myself and other lawyers. The last time I was here in front of this commission was 35 years ago, when in front of a different group of commissioners, I asked for the approval of my bid to acquire that building. I was bidding against the Broward County Bar Association. It's now 35 years later, and I'm asking the support of the commission, and hopefully, the initiation by either the city or the county in the formation of that district, historic district. It would protect those buildings, it would bring appropriate recognition to that area. It will improve, according to all the studies that have been done with regard to historic districts, all the other property in the area will become more valuable because it's located near historic district. It's perfect for that, because there's the Hardy Park directly connected to it, and, you know, the city and the county have both invested a ton of money in that high school, what was the elementary school, excuse me, South Side Elementary School. And of course, I've invested in, in the building to restore the fire station to what it used to be. And I think it's a no-lose proposition for the city to support that designation. And, you know, as you know, the south side of the river is now starting to get some development interest, there's apartment buildings going up, so it should be a really nice little community in that area, and I think it would really enhance that area and preserve those, you know, help preserve those buildings for the future. The fire station that I own will be 100 years old in three years. The other buildings are, are less old, but they're still probably the oldest, some of the oldest buildings in Fort Lauderdale.
Reed, that, hey, thanks, yeah, thanks for being here and sharing. We had started, you and I were working with staff, on, remind me where we were in that process of discussing this with, with staff? What were they telling us, I just forget?
Well, apparently, there. Well, apparently there has to be an application.
Okay.
The application, if I were to, in, to do it, is going to be around $2,500.
Okay.
Um, and if the city does it, it's free.
Okay.
There's no reason, I don't think, for the city not to do it, uh, because you have a, a, a large investment in that cultural center, which is historic.
Yep.
And, uh, and there should be, uh, because if the city's in favor of it, and I'm in favor of it, then the majority of the property owners of that intersection are in favor of it. And I really envision a, a time when you can do to that intersection what's been done in the, in the Hammershy area. You know, they have the streetlights going all the way up and down across? I mean, already the, the, uh, the school has period lighting. My building has the identical period lighting, and with very little investment down the road, once it's in a historic district, that could really be an attraction for Fort Lauderdale. It could be part of the tours they go around and talking about. And I envision, uh, you know, plaques on the building, the Coca-Cola plant with some history about that building. I envision a plaque about the fire station at the corner. Uh, you know, the plaque for the school is so close to the steps that nobody gets to see it. You don't see that plaque until you're almost entering that school. I think that plaque should be out much, much closer to the intersection so that anyone waiting for the bus, anyone traversing that area will see those plaques and understand the significance of the intersection.
Chris, this was, uh, thanks, Reed. This is, is that, are we making sense in terms of steps, or we can get the city to apply, or what's the?
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, I don't know that I've ever heard the story before, but I've heard enough of it now to know what questions to ask.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and, and we had talked with the neighborhood too, Tarpin River, and so we've got, we've got good support there to, to explore this.
It's a great corner. I mean, it's a-
And I think-
Yeah, Commissioner Glass-
Correct me if I'm wrong, Reed, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your work. Correct me if I'm wrong, but all, all those corners are already designated historic, right? They all have city historic designation, correct?
My building is-
I don't know if the north, yeah, and I don't know if the northwest corner is-
Coca-Cola Plant is.
Coca-Cola Plant is.
The northwest is-
It's on the northwest.
It's an empty lot.
It's an empty lot and a bus.
Well, there's nothing there, though, right?
But I'm just saying, I don't think that's designated, so it would designate all of the, the intersection.
No, I understand, but right now, three of those corners, three of the four corners in the intersection are already designated. So you're well on your way in terms of having buy-in from the owners, so I think it's worth pursuing.
Well, what are we, what are we accomplishing if they're already designated?
Well, you're adding another layer of protection for those buildings because it becomes, you know, both with the initial designation and the district, um, it's, it'd be more difficult for somebody maybe to come in and seek to change those buildings or level those buildings. And there's really no downside to the designation of it as a district, and there's a lot of pluses for Fort Lauderdale to have yet another district. Every other study that's been done in other Charleston, South Carolina, and otherwise, the more historic districts you have, the better it is for the city in terms of preservation.
My, my concern is Andrews Avenue, since we don't own Andrews Avenue. So, um, I, I, I don't, I mean, somehow we're going to be, we'd have to, we'd have to dance with the county here and their historic, uh, uh, procedures in order to create a district. Like, like, for example, Sailboat Bend, we own everything there, all the streets and all that. Um, we don't have that same advantage here.
I'm not an expert on that. Michaela-
Michaela, do you know, can you help me out here?
Let me just tell you, I've been in contact with the, with the, uh, county and Richard, uh, Rick Ferrera, who is the Historic Preservation Officer, because the Coca-Cola company is owned by the county. And he's already, we've already been in discussion about the possibility of a district and the county joining with the city. He did make very clear to me that the, the district would have to come from the city. The roadway really has zero to do with, with it being a district.
All right, all right, that's fine. Because, because we had a problem, uh, with the county when we were trying to, I forget what it was, but, um, do you remember, um, there was something to do with the sidewalk, and there was a historic, uh, aspect to it, and they made us go through, just jump through hoops and big expense. I forget what the issues were, but it was right there, near the South Side School. And, um, I just want to make sure they're partnering with us, and, uh, and that way at least we'll, we know we'll be able to accomplish this.
Yeah, Mayor Wolf- Also, just to mention the fact that the renovations that are taking place right presently in the Coca-Cola had to go through the city, even though-
I understand that, but I'm just talking about the street. You know, you want to make a district that would include the street, right? So I just want to make sure we're partnering with the county, that we're not working across purposes.
I love partnering with the county, Mayor. I'll work it, um, and we'll come back to you with-
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Updates and-
Vice Mayor will work it.
I know you could do it.
Love partnering. So we'll do it, and Reed and I'll work on it, and yeah, love to, yeah, we'll-
The trust is behind this 100%.
Yeah, right, exactly.
You'll have our support as well. I'm just confused why you feel like the street would be an issue, the street itself.
Because we don't, well, you want to make a district, so when you, so I don't know how you're defining your district. Does it include streets and sidewalks? If it includes streets and sidewalks, then every time you go to make a repair, or you wanted, you want to change something, you have to go through the approving agencies to do that. And we don't have that authority since it's not our street or sidewalk. See what I'm getting at?
Yes, I understand. I do understand where you're going with this.
But I think it's worth having staff flesh it out a little bit.
I don't disagree. I just said, I would, I would appreciate it, though, if we were working in partnership with the county, and that's where we're going to have Vice Mayor Shepherd.
Vice Mayor's stepping in there.
On it.
I feel pretty, pretty confident that the, the county will be open to this because of the conversations that, I mean, I don't make, mean to make it sound like the trust is the be-all and the end-all with this, but we've been hav- having some pretty positive conversations about moving forward with Broward Trust and the county aspect of historical preservation.
Okay, very good.
Keep it on the positive side.
We applaud your efforts, and I personally support them, so just-
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Okay, um, that concludes our, um, neighbor presentations tonight. We move on to our resolutions. This is R1. R1 is the appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names into the record?
Yes. For the May 17th resolution for consensus, we have Board of Adjustment, Michael Lambrix, uh, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson. And Mr. Lambrix is currently an alternate board member, so he would move to full-time. Robert Wolfe, nominated by Commissioner Moritas, and Douglas Mead, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. Reappointment Cemetery System Board of Trustees, Michael Watson, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. Historic Preservation Board, Richard Rosa, nominated by Mayor Trantallus. Marine Advisory Board, Kitty McGowan, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson. Steve Whitten, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And for tonight's resolution, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Alexander Coffey, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. William Condon, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson. Cemetery System Board of Trustees, Chelsea Krebs, nominated by Mayor Trantallus. Patricia Zeiler, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Charter Revision Board, Kushla Talbot, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. James Brady, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson. Community Appearance Board, Sarah Zubero, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. Education Advisory Board, Alyssa Mendez, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. Michelle Knapp, nominated by Mayor Trantallus. Fire Rescue Facilities Bond Issue Blue Ribbon Committee, Don Larson, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. Historic Preservation Board, Arthur Marcus, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. David Parker, nominated by Mayor Trantallus. Marine Advisory Board, Robert Franks, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson. Bob Dennison, nominated by Mayor Trantallus. Northwest Progressive Flagler Heights Redevelopment Board, Lisa Crawford, nominated by Mayor Trantallus. Michael Lewin, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. Stefan Lu, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Christopher Murphy, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson. And Rhoda Glasgow-Fotteringham, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. And Parks Rec and Beaches Board, Mary Pelican, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. And Tangerine Moore, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie, and that rounds it out.
Great. Are there any other names, uh, to be submitted for the record? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here, too, and made a part here of. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trantallus.
Yes, and I want to thank all those folks who are committing their time and effort to participate in the decision-making process here in Fort Lauderdale. Thank you for your sacrifice to our city. R2, Resolution Supplementing Resolution 19-220, declaring the city's official intent to reimburse itself for the proceeds of the Stormwater Utility Systems Special Assessment Revenue Bonds for stormwater improvement projects. Anyone have any questions with regard to that? There being none, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, supplementing Resolution 19-220 adopted on November 5th, 2019, declaring the official intent of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures for stormwater improvements by incurring debt, maximum principal amount of debt, nature of project costs, authorizing incidental action and repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trantallus.
Yes, and R2 is approved. R3 is a resolution, uh, a resolution of support for the Northwest 21st Avenue Complete Streets and other localized initiatives grant project. Any questions with regard to that? There being none, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in support of the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization's Complete Streets and Other Localized Initiatives Program on Northwest 21st Avenue, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trantallus.
Yes, and the resolution's approved. R4, a resolution providing notice of decision to proceed with the unsolicited proposal submitted by the Los Olas Parking Solutions LLC for the development, operation, and maintenance of a multi-use structure with public parking, EMS station, retail, the kitchen sink, uh, no, excuse me. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
One person signed up to speak, but only for questions. Mr. Lockery, you have any questions? No. Okay, uh, it's been introduced. Um, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing notice of its decision to proceed with the unsolicited proposal submitted by the Los Olas Parking Solutions LLC for the development, operation, and maintenance of a multi-use structure with public parking, a fire rescue EMS substation, and retail at the southeast corner of Second Court and southeast Eighth Avenue, and authorizing negotiations of a proposed interim and/or comprehensive agreement in accordance with Section 255.065 Florida statutes, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trantallus.
Yes, and R4 is approved. R5, this is really exciting. A resolution providing notice of intent to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualifying project submitted as an unsolicited proposal to develop, construct, operate, and maintain a full-service movie studio complex, and notice of intent to accept other proposals for the same project. Mr. Millage, want to come up and, uh, talk to us about it a little bit?
Thank you, Mayor John Millage, attorney on behalf of Fort Lauderdale Studio Initiative. We've got a deck to present, and, uh, I think I can use some help in, uh, So Mayor Commissioners, we're very excited to begin really the first step, you know, in the process to bring large-scale movie, TV, and streaming production studios and a full-time film school to Fort Lauderdale. As you know, with the P3 process, this is the, really the first step. You go through the P3 process, then there's an agreement. Um, and then there'll be a site plan and development process. So there, there's going to be quite a bit of input, um, in the process along the way. So if anybody's listening to this, uh, there's plenty of opportunity, um, you know, to, to participate, um, and have their comments heard by us, and we want to have them heard. So this project is based on the model of LA Center Studios in downtown LA. It's the largest, um, independent studio in Los Angeles. Our project will be a state-of-the-art facility, and it actually will have new features, um, and even more advanced in LA centers, uh, kind of lessons learned, both from a structural standpoint, but also the technology itself. This is a picture of the size of the sound stages. We'll have, um, we're looking at, um, targeting eight sound stages, and we could have more depending if they fit. Um, this is the latest technology that we'll be utilizing in terms of the digital screens, um, and, um, and so that will be on site. The team itself, project team is led by Chris Ursidy. He's the founder and owner and operator of LA Center itself. Um, and he will be the owner and operating partner here. Unfortunately, he got COVID and couldn't travel here tonight. But DJ Viola is here tonight. Um, he's an award-winning director and producer, and he's a longtime colleague of Ms. Ursidy's at LA Center, and he's also will be a co-owner and operating partner. He also has moved his family to Fort Lauderdale, so there's a real commitment, um, to Fort Lauderdale and Broward County. Um, also co-owners will be Michael Yulian. He, he, he also moved up to Fort Lauderdale. He's been living in Miami for many years, and he's moved here. Um, he'll, he'll be co-owner, and he'll lead the development team. Uh, he was a principal in developing Midtown, Midtown Miami, and is a Brownsfield expert. He's also worked on a number of old power plants. So his experience gives really great confidence that this project will be done safely and exceed all environmental standards. Um, also, uh, be remiss if I didn't mention Greg Bruton and John Pugh. Greg, as you know, is the former head of the Department of Sustainable Development, and he grew up in the vicinity of Wingate. And his inclusion in the team signifies the priority of neighborhood outreach, which has begun, um, but it's got a long way to go. But the benefit of this process is, as opposed to development, um, the normal development, we're, we're getting to them way early in the concept planning, so there'll, there's really the opportunity to incorporate and really work with them. Mr. Bruton is also going to make sure we're real sensitive to the, the negative history of the former incinerator, incinerator site that we're aware of. Uh, John Pugh is also a lifelong resident, resident of Broward County, and he's a former official with the, uh, US Department of Commerce, and he'll be working on governmental issues. Before you is the site itself. It's, uh, on 31st Avenue, just north of Sunrise Boulevard. It's approximately a half a mile east of the Fort Lauderdale Swap Shop. Um, the land use is commercial, and the zoning is B2, and, uh, we're not contemplating making any changes with those particular designations. The concept plan that we're working on is anticipating, uh, approximately 350,000 total square feet. Um, and as I mentioned, it, working on eight sound stages, and potentially, uh, if we can fit them under code, we may go, uh, even bigger. LA Center by comparison is six, just to give you a scale. Uh, the principal buildings will be located on the southern, uh, portion of the property. The main building, uh, which houses the production offices and the interior movie sets, will be located at the entrance on 31st Avenue. There's a, uh, existing lighted, signalized intersection, uh, approximate to 14th, um, that, uh, that will be the main access in and out of the, of the site. Um, we're also, uh, planning for the, the food commissary and possibly a food hall to be, uh, uh, you know, within that building. And any of the food opportunities will be open to the public on a daily basis, so that'll be the opportunity for the public to interact, um, you know, with the actors and, and the other workers, um, you know, that, that are working on the various projects. And, and Mayor, if, uh, if it's okay with you, I'd like to turn it over to DJ Viola. He's going to talk about the job, jobs, uh, film school, and, uh, secondary educational opportunities, and then we'll wrap up.
Absolutely. Good evening. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see all of you. I am so excited to finally be here. This is, uh, been a real passion project of so many of ours, and so it's a real honor. Thank you for the time. Uh, thank you for the, uh, the interest. Um, uh, and thanks, John, for the introduction. Um, a real animated one at that, but that was good for you. So just to give a, a quick overview of what the film industry looks like, um, there is, the film and television industry is a real boon to any economy that it plugs into. And it does that by two main ways that a lot of people don't necessarily know about the film industry. Because when we think of the film industry, we think of The Rock, and we think of maybe how much money he made to make, um, you know, his, his, his latest Disney, you know, Cruise film. Uh, and he made $20 million. But where did the other 200 million go? Well, that went to the long string of people who also are at the end of that movie. And so what's interesting about the film industry is it does two things extremely well. It hires high median wage jobs that are tradesman jobs, craftsman jobs. It hires high median wage jobs that are tradesman jobs, craftsman jobs. These are, these are jobs that we already have available in the community. These are jobs that are set builders, set constructions, set painters. These are hairstylists. These are wardrobe stylists. These are electricians. These are AC repair. These are all the services that are required. If you see anything on set, if you see anything in a movie that's been placed there by someone's job whose that is, and that is within this community. And so it is a job amplifier. These jobs in particular are good-paying, middle-class jobs with consistent work and with consistent team effort networking. The other thing that the industry does really well is it plugs into the community in which it engages in. They have to rely on local vendors. They have to rely on local restaurants. They have to rely on local hardware stores, local beauty supply and cosmetics. All local stores, car rentals, anything you can think of in and around the area is things that the film does not import, they engage with locally. And so whether you want to be involved in the film industry, or whether you want to be involved in your local community, as a business owner, as a service provider, these things all come into play in the film industry. And so we're excited about the opportunity in which we think we can truly amplify this area by bringing this industry, you know, to it. With those jobs and with these careers that we know that this industry brings, we also would be remiss if we weren't also keeping an eye on making sure that the local crew base is also blossoming. So we are dedicated to a film school on this site and plugging into other local schools. In fact, we already met Mr. Charles over at Dillard High and was absolutely floored by the capacity that school has already started putting out. We want to reach out to many other local areas and give people the opportunities for mentorships, apprentice programs, and of course, then onsite training. Because if we actually, when we accomplish this goal of attracting Hollywood here, then we also need to make sure that we have a crew base here, a local crew base that can be facilitating this and taking advantage of this. So that in and of itself is sort of why we're so excited about this industry, is that it truly comes in and it works within the industry, works within the community in which it plugs into.
All right, great. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. You have any final thoughts?
Yeah, just final thoughts, Mayor. So we just ask you to start the process and to begin the twenty-one day notice period so we can get this going. Thank you.
You want a twenty-one day notice period? All right. There are a couple of other people who've signed up to speak. Vincent Thrower, are you here, Vincent? And Wilbert Brim? Good evening, sir.
Vincent Thrower, can you hear me?
Good evening.
Vincent Thrower, good evening. So I hear everything they're saying, and this is like a good project, a good project for the Northwest community, but my question is, so will they be putting this agreement and the program they're talking about as part of their non-solicited proposal and by codifying this stuff as a community benefit program? Not just saying it, but putting it into a contract format, holding these, holding the people or developers, sort of like how Tyler Perry did over in Atlanta. We saw what he was able to accomplish in Atlanta, and it's like a good project. But people have to always see things in writing and make sure that these bullet points, that they can hold them accountable. So that's my question to the mayor and commissioner right now.
Well, Mr. Millage, do you want to step up to the plate and respond to that? What are you putting in writing, Mr.?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We're following the model of War Memorial, and we did a similar project where we did basically a benefits program for the neighborhood, and actually, the draft that we put together, you know, has that same type language. So we're anticipating that and that we actually put that in writing. So the answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
To the mayor and commission, yeah, that may sound good again at War Memorial, but we're talking about the Northwest area, so I would recommend that you look at what they did in Atlanta and what Tyler Perry put together and make sure that when people always say that they're going to, and I'm not disagreeing with Mr. Millage, but you pretty much know how to operate. I, we, as a people, expect that we're talking about the future of an industry that is moving to Florida. So therefore, we want to see as much as possible and reflect the neighborhood and the people that are put in there, especially when we're talking about a dollar a year situation. A lot of money going to be made, so we need to see that economics also trickle down into the community also. Thank you.
Okay, I think your message is heard loud and clearly.
John, will there be a, in terms of employment, you know, a benchmark for a percent of local, you know, residents being employed? Is that something you've thought about, or?
Well, we thought about obviously having a program, you know, obviously in the neighborhood first preference, and obviously notice and first preference of jobs. We've had to work through those procedures with legal, but the answer is yes.
Yeah, okay, great. And Mayor, could I ask John a question, or do you want me to wait?
Would you just wait a second, because Mr. Brim, are you here? There you go. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone, and I'm really excited about being here tonight. Also, in two thousand seventeen, I met with Mr. McKenzie on the same property and about the putting a movie studio there, because at the time, Miami, they were talking about putting one up, but it didn't go through. And so some of the things that I went over with, excuse me here, some of the things that I went over, that Ms. Lightman, Lighterman here? How you doing, ma'am? Yes, she was saying that, you know, this is just like the right thing to do at this time at the landscape, put it Broward on the map, and what I'd like to say, for a lot of y'all is already on the map, because looking at some of my favorite shows, FBI and Blue Bloods, they, you know, some of the things that they're talking about, you know, they would mention Fort Lauderdale. And then when I hear those things, when I hear those things, when I hear Fort Lauderdale mentioned, I'm like a guy at a football game, you know, all excited, you know, it's like, yeah, because Fort Lauderdale, you know, a nationally known television. So some of the people in our community are talking about, you know, the traffic. I'm sure as we continue to move forward for this project, all those things, engineering and everything is going to be taken care of. The gentleman said earlier that, you know, there's no way you can build something of this stature and not hire from the community. We have lots of talent here. I asked one young lady that I know who's an aspiring actress to come up, you know, me to come out and support, and I know other people that are in support of this project also too, because they have a lot of talent, and I just asked them to come out and support, but you know, do the other obligations. So me, myself, things that you're looking at to do with the studio, the schooling, you know, I mean, I don't see where we can lose with this here. It's a win-win for everybody. I'm looking forward to it. Born and raised here in Fort Lauderdale, this has always been my dream. So I just thank you all, and I hope everything goes through, and I know, Mr. Berry, you say you were gung ho, so I'm gung ho too.
Okay, and you can rest assured that the studio will have the mayor's headshot on their desk in the morning. You can rest assured, correct, Mayor? They'll have that first thing in the morning.
Talent.
Lots of talent in this city. Lots of talent.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? Okay, you want to continue? Mr. Millage, I'm sorry? Yeah, but after you talk, you got to sign up, you know, give us your name and all that. We need that for the record, but you can come up and speak if you'd like. Get all dressed up, you look so nice. Why don't you?
Thank you so much. I actually did not have.
Can you introduce yourself for it? Can you?
My name is Sherry Alvina Nishell-Fortson, and he said I was aspiring. I've acted, I've been there, done that for years. I moved here from Kentucky thirty-three years ago with three hundred dollars and a pocket full of dreams, and that was to be the actress. But that didn't pay the bills, okay? And so, yeah, now I work at Carnival Cruise Line, which is the best, right? But I would absolutely love to see a dream come back around. I feel like it would be full circle, but I've been here long enough to know also that these things tried to happen before, and we had some things happen, and then we're just pulled out from others, and we were all like, it just seems like every time it tries to do something like that, it doesn't work, and I don't want to be Debbie Downer, but I just want to, you know, really say that I'm for it. We'd just love to see that, make sure it's local people, because I've done a lot of shows. I was that person that our stuff was tabled, okay, from ABC. But they always bring people from Hollywood to do everything, and then us little, we were just like little peas in a pod and never really got to do much, and so I definitely echo the gentleman there that make sure that it's all of us and not just the big people from Hollywood that get to do everything.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Young? Okay. Okay. So the last person, April Young, you just signed up.
Good afternoon, see. My name is April Young, and I'm actually one of the homeowners that's inside of this area. I would say that we have actually started conversation, dialect, and I've actually been inside of Broward County Educational for over seventeen years, and proudly, I am proud of Broward County. However, I would actually say that this is a project, and it sounds wonderful, and we have future that's coming forward, and the jobs are great, and educational is phenomenal. So without knowing how to use dollars, without cents, it doesn't work hand in hand. So I would say that we need to look at the project, as we all have been, and acknowledge the greatness of it significantly, and definitely be reminded of our children that it has to deal with, not just because they are deciding to leave education for something such as this, but for it to have a makeup of something that can be generously given back into the community as well as life. So I would say this definitely needs to go to the table of recognition and give it a little bit more in-depth information as far as what would actually be in the best interest of the community. And with that being said, I have the honor of actually speaking with these guys, and the project is wonderful. At the same given time, I know that there is considered to be unfinished business with that property, and I think that, before you can move forward at any meeting or any step forward, it would definitely be mandatory to address those issues.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item?
Mayor?
Who just said mayor?
I did. Maybe we can also explain that, yes, to your point, we will be entering into a very comprehensive agreement before the day is done. This is just the very beginning of the process so that we can at least say this is interesting to the city, and then we put it out, and we see if there are anybody, if there's anyone else that wants to come forward, and then we see if anyone does, if they don't, then we enter into some very, very detailed, what's called the comprehensive agreement, where all of that will be very much spelled out in writing. And Mayor, you know, I did want to just make one point. It was interesting to read the article in the Sun Sentinel about this project and see folks at the county take credit for bringing these guys here first before we did, and I would just say to the county, you know, it's great that you want to say we were first, and I would hope that the county would step up, match the city's big commitment here, and so that they earn that credit for saying we brought them here. I would love to see that. I'd love to see Broward County just say, hey, we're going to match the generosity of the City of Fort Lauderdale. We're going to make sure this is a win-win for everybody, and here's what we're going to do. And I'm not just talking about that rebate program, because that rebate program is not a lot of money really that they've done, although it's great, and it's a step forward until our state gets its act together and comes back to the day when we used to have incentives for the film and television industry. We must return to that. We must lobby for those days again. But I'm all for sharing the credit, so I say to Broward County, step up, step up in a big way, earn that credit, and we can be partners in this, and that would be tremendous. That's all I got to say, Mayor.
All right. Do you want to introduce the resolution?
I'd be happy to introduce the resolution.
How many days?
Did we talk about it a little bit?
Yeah, I wanted to talk.
We can talk about it, sure, but we need to introduce the resolution. So it's introduced for a period of, now, section three is blank, so for a period of how many days?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one days, okay. So the resolution has been introduced for twenty-one days. Okay, Commissioner Maritas?
Yes, thank you. I am also excited about this, whether it's for opportunities for our community with the film industry, or for jobs for the community, or new careers in terms of new training opportunities for different careers that may come to our area. I do want to understand and maybe help the neighbors understand the mitigation process. What will that look like? And when will we get more information about it? Is that in the interim agreement or comprehensive agreement? And then I do want to understand what is next? So after twenty-one days, is it, do we go into the interim agreement? Are we going straight into a comprehensive? And then I have one question for clarification. You know, this came to us after the state statute changed the law, so now everything's public.
Correct.
On this, okay, but then we have pickleball, which still is not public.
Correct.
Okay, so that's just, right, because we have these two back-to-back, which sometimes a little confusing. All right, so thank you. So what's next? So after twenty-one days, what happens? Just so the public kind of understands.
So after twenty-one days, if that's the time you all decide, and the publications have gone through, if we have received no other competing projects or ideas in the form of a submittal, then you'll do what you just did with regards to the Los Olas Garage. You'll have a resolution indicating that you want to go forward with this, give us the authority to negotiate, and then we'll decide whether we need to or want to do an interim agreement or go straight to comprehensive. Interim sometimes will be beneficial because it allows some of the underlying testing and due diligence that needs to occur while we work on the big agreement, so that'll be a decision that we make, that you all make eventually, because you have to approve all those agreements. So that would be the process at that point from at least a legal document standpoint. And then ultimately, obviously, as you know from the other P threes, nothing is a done deal until we have that almighty comprehensive agreement approved upon and approved by you.
Sure. So John Millage, what do you think? If we give you twenty-one days, how long do you think it'll take for us to see a comprehensive agreement? I'm just hoping I can vote on this. That's what I'm kind of trying to figure out.
We've got a draft in place. I mean, the model is big.
I want to vote on it, yeah. Bring this to me before November?
Of course, yeah. We've got a draft in place now.
Okay.
Is this working?
Yeah, we're here.
So you think in a couple months?
So this transaction's not, it's more complicated from the environmental standpoint, but it's based on the model of War Memorial, so we've got a draft in place, so we're not anticipating a long time period to, you know, work through that with staff. As to the timing of the community benefits, the way War Memorial worked is it required us to do that. If you're looking for us to complete that at the same time, you know, we can do that. But we're in the process of meeting with the neighbors now. We have a series of meetings that are ongoing, so this is something that's going to be on the table that we're going to hear, so we'll endeavor to work out as much as we can by the time the comprehensive agreement lease comes back, that we'll have a lot of that flushed out.
Okay, so if we go straight to the comprehensive agreement, then I would just like to make sure that agreement does have some kind of milestones for the training opportunities for the community in that comprehensive agreement, just so we don't have to say, well, let's rework it and come back, and I don't, so I think that's important. I was kind of excited about that when I heard about it too, and I know our neighbors are excited about it, so let's just make sure there are some milestones in the comprehensive agreement for that, and obviously, the mitigation, you know, you have to do. Very exciting, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, John. Can you pull up the site plan, please? Just want to take a look at that. Great, can we see it on the? So tell me about the school, John. Where is it? Yeah.
Well, LA Center, it's part of the office complex, so it's likely going to be, you see the entrance on Thirty First Avenue, the main entrance of that office building is, it's a multi-story office building. It's likely going to be housed there, but I don't know if any final decisions are made to the location. LA Center, that's, you know, where it's located, basically in the main office complex.
Cool. And is this like a film school, or like?
A film school, yeah.
Studying to be director, or actor?
It's a college-level film school.
Okay.
I can get DJ to talk to you about the details, you want?
What's interesting in particular about onsite film schools are they, they get to spend more time away from theoretical film and more hands-on training. And so most of the schools that give you opportunity to be on sets, to be actually learning how to use a C stand, actually learning all the different disciplines inside the filmmaking process, tends to be very hands-on, so you're immediately working as you head out of school. And so it's the access to there that, I mean, I know from a crew base. And so, it's the access to there that, I mean, I know from a crew base, I almost entirely hire from schools that, where people have hands-on training. Theoretical stuff is executive stuff. It's still important.
Right.
It's good to know your industry. But this school in particular is a trade school, so you truly know how to make films leaving there.
And so, they're there, and they're probably helping with real stuff while they're in school, right?
Yeah, you get access.
Exposure to it, a little bit.
As long as it's done safely, of course. You often get freedom to move about. If a soundstage isn't being rented at that time, then guess what? That school gets to go film in there.
Cool.
And then, our industry in particular is such a mentor-based industry, that you end up, when you're onsite there, you have so many opportunities to plug in with working individuals in our industry, and start to see the different disciplines, to say, "You know what? I actually really like lighting."
Yeah, great.
Or, "I like directing." I like, you know, there's so many different facets to this, you don't understand until you're standing there on set, you know? So I think that's what makes onsite so much more interesting.
It's great. I think it's phenomenal. What, how many students are we talking about, just round numbers? Trying to get a sense of how many folks would be in the school.
I mean, it's scalable. You know, you'd have to see, I think the, you got to make sure that the class within itself can generate its own production. So that in and of itself sort of has a, has a minimum that it could be. You know, you can't have a four-person class and go make a movie, you know? So you might be talking thirty-person a class, maybe three of those going on. You could be a hundred-person per grade on a four-year grade, four hundred students, but these are very round numbers at the moment.
Sure, okay.
But I think that's, and then, who knows how that thing blossoms?
Yep.
Let alone, you may not be there for the full four-year accredited program. You could be taking night school there. You could be taking just more particular trades, you know? Depending on how this thing blossoms into how the community wants to engage with it, then the school will kind of morph into what the demand is.
Great.
There could be that if you wanted to be a journeyman, and you needed to move up into a certain, you know, levels, then we can have very, more specific training on those things, too. And offer that where maybe it isn't just your full four-year, so.
Great. And just because I know so little about film, would these be graduate from high school, and then you could engage in the film school, or college, and then engage all of the above, or?
It's post-high school.
Post-high school.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Or, and anywhere beyond that, right?
Great, absolutely. So the mayor could come in, he could learn.
I think he's.
Yeah, just share his talents. Not far from high school.
I'm ready for my close-up.
Ready to go. Ready for his close-up.
Good, good. Okay, great, thank you. That's great, that helps. And then, I think this is going to be a question for John, Mayor. But John, this might be, might not be good. The mitigation that needs to be done to the site, how, like, what's the cost here? And I want to just get a sense, so that as a city, we have a sense of, okay, if we just want to do something ourselves as a city, what would it cost us to kind of get this to scrape then?
So this, as I understand it, this was a former superfund site that was cleaned up. There's an incinerator that was on the south side of the property, and that area is basically cleared and ready for development. On the northern two-thirds was the old ash pit, and it's covered. There's been, my understanding is four, four-four-year, or five-year reports that have been done with EPA. The last one was clean. So there's no more monitoring that's required anymore. All those, I think, the city manager can verify, those have been kind of pulled off of the site. So it's ready to be developed.
Okay.
We have had some contact with DEP on it, and they've so far given a green light. So in terms of what we're intending to do, we're really not trying to disturb anything. The areas that we want to develop on is ready to be developed. The cap itself, we may park on top of it, but we're not going to anticipate putting any, right now, putting any major structures on it. So in terms of the cost of it, the cost of this is probably more built into financing, insurance, and things like that, because you're going to operate around these sites. You can do it safely, but there's some more embedded costs, some risk costs. That's where the costs are. In my understanding, it's not as much in really any kind of cleanup, because that's been done. And we are not trying to interfere with it.
Okay, all right, thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, have one more comment?
Yes.
Sorry, unless you're going to go, Steve. I would like to introduce you all, maybe DJ, to Zoe Sander. She's our chief education officer, and she's done a lot of kind of research in our city for how to work with Broward County Public Schools and Broward College in terms of, you know, developing and designing programs that complement and work with our high school students and college students. So I think Zoe may be an interesting resource, and as well as funding opportunities that may be available from the state in terms of grants and stuff. So I just hope you all will connect to her. She would be a good resource for you.
Anything further from the Commission? There being none?
Just want to comment.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Ed.
First of all, DJ, John, thank you for bringing this to us, in particular, to this spot. I've always said, from the time that we, I got on as Commissioner Greg Bruton, that this site, Mr. Young, as you indicated, has always been an issue for the community. And we have been promised with environmental reports that it is clean. And I've always said, one way to test that is develop it. Any site that you want to develop, you got to stick a shovel in the ground, you got to get dirt samples, you got to get permission, and it would ease some of the pains of the past to know that we can do this. And particularly on the flat piece that Mr. Millage so eloquently expressed that was not contaminated, and just the mound site, which is cap, a six-foot cap. And in this, in your plan, you've indicated that you didn't want to disturb that. You're going to use that as a part of some of your staging and things of that nature. But the young man I met initially, who's your project developer, that has done this type of development on sites very similar to this, who has all this experience, can someone speak to his experience, so that we can, that's on your team, or that will be on your team? I know he's not here.
He's here, yeah.
Oh, where is he? Oh, I didn't, look, you're aging a little bit. Come on up here. He's been doing this, this is what he does. This is what he brings to the team. So I just want you to, just a little bit about your experience, and I'm going to say a couple more things, and let it go, because this is a marvelous project. And I also want to say, Mr. Brim, I want you to, thank you. It was 2017, you came to me with the idea of doing this very same thing. And I mentioned it to the group when we did this, for you to show up tonight, it's just monumental. I want you to be engaged with what's going on here, and a part of, and we did talk about all the community benefits, all the opportunities, and some of the things that the Commission has spoken about tonight. We did agree to put that in there, and that's why you have folks like Mr. Bruton sitting there to make sure that we're doing that. Mr. Thore, I appreciate you coming from Pompano, giving us how you feel. I remember one day I was at your sitting, you told me, "Don't come to Pompano unless I talk to you. Don't come to Fort Lauderdale unless you talk to me." But no, thank you for coming tonight, and your tidbit was good for the conversation. I'm looking forward to this. But just talk about that, because this is the biggest hurdle, as April and others have indicated, that we'll have to deal with. And I don't think it's as big as we think it is, especially when you have a team that's this dynamic and experienced to move this project forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Michael Julian, and I've been in the brownfield redevelopment business.
Speak up a little bit, we can't hear you.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Okay. My name is Michael Julian. Thank you, Commissioner McKenzie. I've been in the brownfield redevelopment business for about twenty-five years of my forty-five-year real estate development career. The first large brownfield development site I've done in South Florida was Midtown Miami. It was a former toxic rail site. It was a former place where it was the former center of the city of Miami. And we developed a pretty transformative development over there, which changed one of the worst neighborhoods of Miami into one of the most exciting neighborhoods. And I truly believe we're going to do the same thing here in the former Wingate site. You brought up the issues of toxicity on the site. The site is what's described in the environmental business as a clean closure. The site has no more methane. The methane vents have been removed. There is no more groundwater monitoring. It's been monitored for twenty years. The water is clean. The deed restriction only requires that we don't provide drinking water. We're going to use the city's drinking water. And we don't permeate the cap. The cap contains the fly ash that was remaining there from the old incinerator opportunities or operations. So we don't permeate the cap. What DJ will be doing is using backlot and shooting opportunities on top of that cap. There won't be any structures on there, you know, until we really understand the condition of that cap. So I hope that answers your question.
You answered my question. And I really wanted that for the community, because we've been on the road with this, talking to folks, obviously, Ms. Young. And I thank you for supporting and understanding the history of it, and that we have to move forward. But make sure we are inclusive in terms of the community. And the first thing you all did, and Mr. Charles did call me from Dilla High School, talking about how excited they were about being asked to be a part of. So that within itself is monumental. It shows your commitment. You did that day one. But there's a lot more to come, as we keep giving you more and more stuff. I think it's monumental. I don't want credit. I just want to get this done, as the Commissioner to my left has indicated as expeditiously as we possibly can, because this mayor is a game changer. This is a game changer. And just by its mere location, it's going to almost dictate that community is a part of it. And that was part of our conversation out in California. So I'm very excited. I can't wait. I too will be leaving here, but it's good to be here tonight and to be able to introduce it. I didn't even want to do that, but to be a part of it. And to show the commitment of this team up here for this excitement. Again, thank all of you, especially you, Ms. Young, Mr. Brim, Mr. Thore. I miss somebody. It's all right. But thank all of you for coming here as a community, and let us know how you feel about this project. I think we're ready to roll.
Great, 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 great. Okay, you want to call the roll? Wait, nobody else, right?
No.
Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing notice of intent pursuant to Section 255.065 Florida statutes to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualifying project to develop, construct, operate, and maintain a full-service movie studio complex on city-owned property located at 1400 Northwest Thirty First Avenue in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, commonly known as the former Wingate Incinerator Site, and notice of intent to accept other proposals for the same project and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R5 is now approved, and it'll be twenty-one-day period, and we'll come back again with this, correct? Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Nice seeing you all again. Okay, R6, a resolution providing notice of intent to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualifying project submitted as an unsolicited proposal to develop, operate, maintain a pickleball facility. Yay! And notice of intent to accept other proposals of the same project. The city of Fort Lauderdale is experiencing pickleball fever.
Hmm, yes.
Oh, my goodness. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Introduce.
Any questions on this?
We need to set the date.
Yes, we need.
We have to set the date.
Determination of how many days?
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days? Okay. Very good.
Introduced.
It's introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing notice of intent pursuant to Section 255.065 Florida statutes to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualifying project to develop, operate, and maintain a pickleball facility on the southwest portion of Snyder Park, located at 3299 Southwest Fourth Avenue in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33315, and notice of intent to accept other proposals for the same project and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R6 is approved. See you in twenty-one days.
One twenty-one days.
Okay.
Bring back the agreement soon.
PH1. This is the first of two public hearings to consider a development agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Towers at La Solis LLC for the Towers Plan Development District pursuant to Chapter 163.3220-163.3243 Florida statutes. A second public hearing to consider the development agreement will be held 6:00 PM on May 17, 2022, in these chambers of the City Commission of City Hall, 100 North Andrews Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. This is the time for anyone to, anyone in the public to speak about or comment on the development agreement. This is just, so the purpose of this public hearing is to just have public hearing, but we're not voting on anything tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this development project? I have, I have two people, excuse me, just for questions. So no one has asked to speak up on this matter, other than the people representing the applicant. So anyone wish to speak on this matter?
Mayor, do we have to do disclosures on this, or not?
Do we have to what?
I don't think so.
No disclosures required, but I will have to ask a motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Remove the seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. Now, no further actions required from the City Commission at this time. A resolution approving the development agreement will be considered at the second public hearing, which will be May 17, 2022. Okay. Moving on to PH2. This is a public hearing and adoption of resolution approving the Parks Recreation and Beach Advisory Board's recommendation for approval of twelve parks improvement projects. I have a couple people sign up to speak. Mr. Lockery, just for questions, and Mr. Labrie, just for answers. No, he wants answers. Do you want to come up and speak? We got the, we got the full backup now. And did everyone get a chance to look at it?
I did.
Yep.
And I think it helps explain a little bit more about the bond project list, and the proposal from the working group, and then the recommended revisions on all the projects. So Mr. Labrie, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Trentalis, Vice Mayor Sorenson, Commissioners Moritas, Glassman, McKenzie. My name is James Labrie. I'm a resident of Pointe Zetti Heights neighborhood for nearly twenty years. I'm also a board member of the Pointe Zetti Heights Civic Association. Poontzetti Heights was in District 2, but now we are in District 1. School playgrounds in Fort Lauderdale, just letting you all know that.
I think maybe we'll get something done.
Okay.
Yeah.
The school playgrounds in Fort Lauderdale need help. And even though the city does not have a responsibility to the schools, as they are under the jurisdiction of the Broward County School Board, the generous voters of Fort Lauderdale passed a $200 million Parks Fund in 2018 that included approximately $11 million for joint-use parks that would make improvements to school playgrounds and at the same time provide usable park space in the neighborhoods located in what is considered a park desert. Sunrise Middle School located, which is located in Poontzetti Heights, was funded at $1.725 million. Unfortunately, some schools were left out completely of the, in the original 2018 bond, and some schools have been identified as needing increases to their project costs. This created a deficit of approximately $1.9 million. The Education Advisory Board identified some cost savings, but it came at the expense of what was originally defined in the parks bond for certain schools, disregarding what the voters had actually voted on in 2018. In my opinion, this was not a good way to resolve the issue, as I believe what was voted on should be what moves forward. However, if the City Commission would allow a $200,000 decrease in funding for the bathrooms in the Croissant Park project, which has budgeted at $2.62 million, and a $675,000 decrease in funding for William Dandy Middle School, which sits across from Oswald Park, which is getting $3.2 million in improvements in the parks bond, that would decrease the $1.9 million deficit to just over $1 million. In a previous commission meeting, Commissioners Glassman and Sorenson generously have offered to reallocate funds for future parks land acquisition. My question to all of you is what other reallocations can be made out of a $200 million park bond? Surely, surely, there is more money there that while it may be already allocated, it is not yet spent. I am asking for all of you to dig deep and push hard to find the $1 million that is needed that will resolve the joint use program deficit. Finally, construction and material costs have gone up considerably since 2018, so many school playgrounds may not even get what is exactly described in the bond. I ask that the Parks Department and the city's education department work with neighborhood civic associations, the schools, and their parent teachers associations to ensure that what does get accomplished is what the residents of the city want. Please, do what is right for the voters, the schools, and the neighborhoods.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, Commissioner, what's your pleasure here?
So, I've got maybe a couple questions.
Right ahead.
That's right.
Thank you. Please come up here, Phil. Thanks.
Phil, thanks. Thanks for this updated list. So tell me if I'm reading this right. So we've got bond project list on one column. And so, if I'm understanding that right, that's the kind of what was on the list that the voters approved. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Working group proposal. Who's the working group?
The working group was city Parks and Recreation staff, Zoe Saunders from the Education staff, and then also the School Board staff. They had staff from the administration and as well as the principals from some of the schools. So it was a mixture of School Board and city staff.
Okay. So the working group came together and kind of made some adjustments, changes to the allocation of the $10.9 million that was originally allocated in the bond. In other words, they didn't increase or decrease the total amount that would go to schools, they just reallocated it a little bit around different projects.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Then what's EAB and PRBAB recommendations, revisions?
So the working group made a presentation to the Education Advisory Board.
Okay.
Education Advisory Board tweaked those recommendations to what you see in that column. Then those recommendations were brought to the Parks and Recreation Board. They reviewed them and approved them as well. So the, those two boards approved what was recommended that came out of the Education Advisory Board's recommendation.
Okay, got it. And again, just reallocated, moved things around, but kept the $10.9 million, which is what is, we're able to spend.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the, where I'm hearing, maybe, the concern that I'm hearing from the community is there's, so we've got a little over $1 million that was promised in the bond project list but has been changed. Is that, am I saying that right?
So... It was, it was on the list that went to the bond, to the voters.
Speak up, Phil. Please, speak into the mic and not...
Okay. So the, after the working group did their analysis of all the schools in the city, and it was a very intensive process.
Yep.
Went to every school. Then they developed a matrix, scored it for different reasons, for different points, which I think we have reviewed before.
Yep.
That's what came out of the working group's proposal. So they ranked them just on facts. So it was just what's the best way to spend that money, in their opinion, on looking at everything. And so that's where the working group proposal came from that went forward.
Okay. So... So let's see here. So when I'm looking at, for example, Walker Park, just as an example, Walker Park in the original bond listing was, it was for $650,000, $657,000, $650,700. Walker Park. And then what the EAB and so forth, recommendations, revisions is $600,700. So that's been cut back by $50,000.
Right. So you look at Walker Park, in the whole scheme of things, when the, when the staff review went forward, the lighting in the pavilion was removed. They believed those funds could be utilized better somewhere else.
Okay.
So that was removed. And then when it went to the EAB board after some discussion, they felt like the lighting should be added back in to Walker Park. So they did that, and that's why that one number went back up when it went to the EAB.
Gotcha. So they added, for example, the lighting, but they still kept the pavilion out?
Correct.
For the $50,000 there. Okay. So just that as a, as a question, and it might just be because I'm not, haven't talked to everyone, but for example, for that, I haven't heard anyone from Walker Park concerned about that. They might be concerned about not having the pavilion. I just haven't heard it. Is that, are you hearing concern from the school or...
There has been some discussion when this came up about putting the money, the dollars back for Sunrise, that if that's the case, then there are others, there was other communities that said, if that's what's going to happen, then we feel like that we should get our full funding back as well. So I would think if you, again, if you look at Walker, for example, what we're, what we're proposing, if the idea is to fund Sunrise Middle to the $1.725, that Walker, for example, would get the $65700. And we would do, just like we're going to do with Sunrise Middle and the Poontzetti Heights neighborhood, we would work with Walker Park School and that neighborhood to figure out the best way to spend this $65700.
Okay. So, great. So what, I haven't done the math yet. So what is the delta between bond project list? How do I put this? The bond project list, how do we make, yeah, what's the difference between what was promised initially to all the schools in the bond project list and what is made in the EAB, PRAB recommendations? I know the total dollar amount is the same, right?
Right. To make everybody whole.
Exactly.
And the EAB and Park Board recommendation is $1,87,500.
$1 million?
$87,500.
$1 million, $87,500. In other words, let me make sure I understand this. If the City Commission was able to identify $1,870,500, that would make whole all of the promises made in the bond project list.
It would do that, and it would also fund the additional schools that were added during the working group matrix recommendation that went to the EAB. So it would do both.
All right. So do both. Great. Thank you. The next question, and I think we answered this this afternoon, but I just want to double check. So if the Commission's interested in trying to find that $1,870,500, maybe this is to Chris, but, okay, are options for finding that? So number one, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but we each have certain allocation for property purchase. Can some or all of that come from the individual commissioners if they want to use that?
It could.
Okay. So that's one option.
It could, but it would be upon approval by the entire Commission.
By the entire Commission. Great. Completely understood. Okay, great. So that's one option. Another option, it sounds like, if I heard it right this afternoon, was general fund, Chris? Asking the city manager, we'd like to find this.
To go find dollars in the...
Okay.
Correct. To go find dollars in the general fund. Let me, if I can, though, let me just carry on for a little bit beyond that, because I've heard the word "promised" a couple times. And these were not promised. And so there are four...
State V's were not promised. What are you talking about?
When I talk about the bond funds, there are four park projects that did not have to go before any other review committee before it could come to the City Commission and could just move forward without any other approvals. It's nice to know what the Education Advisory Board thinks in this process, but it really doesn't matter, because the only board that really is weighing in on these prior to it coming to you for a recommendation according to the way the bond is structured is the Parks and Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board. It is somewhat of a good thing, but also somewhat of a coincidence that they happen to align with what the Education Advisory Board said, because the bond does not call out the Education Advisory Board as even a consulting body to make a recommendation. Having said that, the bond also contemplated that anything other than those four projects, with the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board, and then with your approval or disapproval or modification, these modifications were very appropriate with the way that the bond document was originally written. So, yeah, I just want to put that out there that I, there's been this, this theme that these were promised funds, and there was four parks that were promised, and the rest you do all have some discretion with.
Okay.
But wasn't it listed, Chris, on some sort of backup? I remember pages of backup about the allocation and the line item breakdown.
It was, but there was also a process by which you had some authority to make modifications.
Okay. But the voters and myself, we all did see this list. We all advocated for it, and we all thought that's what we were voting for when we voted for the $200, $200 million bond. Right? We all voted for the line item, which was this $10 million.
But the ordinance, the way it was structured, because remember, the referendum went out, it, it's a singular question that went to the voters. So technically, the voters answered a question.
Yeah.
That did not include all that backup. Now, there was backup out there considering, but it was part of a resul, I'm sorry, part of an ordinance packet that also indicated that you all had flexibility, because it, it changes over time and priorities may change, and things that this working group have identified, maybe were not known at the time. So you have that flexibility built in.
Yeah, exactly. So I think both are, in my interpretation, Commissioner Maritas, for me at least, both are true. There was, you know, I think a list that detailed, and we do have flexibility.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of how I interpret it. So, so I guess, Mayor, would I, my suggestion, or, you know, up to you all, but I'd love to contribute at least a portion of, of the dollars that are dedicated District 4 park purchase dollars to help close this one, to, to provide funding for the $1,870,000.
May I make a suggestion, too?
Yeah, sure.
And I was thinking about this after our conference meeting. Maybe we should each, and it's just a suggestion, but use some of our park acquisition dollars from our individual districts to support the schools in our district. So let's say you have four schools that need additional funding. Maybe it's $400,000. You could use your, and I'm making these numbers up, because I haven't looked, you could use your park acquisition dollars to support the additional improvements for your schools. Commissioner Glassman can do the same for his schools. I can use my acquisition dollars to support additional funding, the funding that's not included in the initial bond allocation. So we could each offset our schools to fund what the Education Advisory Board and the Park Board agrees with. So whatever is above and beyond the initial park acquisition backup from the, you know, the bond, then we could just, and it's going to be a different number based on each of our districts.
I mean, I think, I, I think everyone's heart is in the right place, but this is very, this is a very confusing procedure.
It is truly one bucket. So it's not, there's not a district, it's on paper. We said this is what is available in District 4 for land acquisition, District 2, District 3, 1, but it's all one bucket of money.
Right. Well, the park acquisition dollars are really four buckets. They're $7 million a district.
Right.
So we can use each.
I agree.
And if we, I would support you using your money for your schools. I would support me using any money, and I'm talking about above and beyond what was originally voted on. The recommendations from the Education Advisory Board.
The challenge with, so I like your thinking. I'm open to it. The only challenge is, I think, it would, there, out of this list, there's going to be a heavier cost burden on, is Sunrise in District 2?
Well, Sunrise is in District 1. It will be.
Oh, it's District 1?
But it wouldn't be a cost burden, because that one point...
I just saved a lot of money.
Well, no, 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 hold on.
Yeah, I thought it was in yours.
Let me, let me tell you where I was coming from with this.
Good.
That was already appropriated in my mind.
I just saved a fortune.
Right.
Now, hold on. That was already on the initial list. So I'm saying, everything that was on the initial list, voters voted on, we approved when we looked at our districts, and we said, this seems fair. Whatever was already approved, that's where we start. If the Education Advisory Board added some other projects, then you use your park acquisition dollars to supplement that. So for me, I'm not actually giving any extra money, because the one, the money for Sunrise or Sunrise Middle was already in that initial bond. The money for Flornata School, $783,000, was in the initial bond. So for me, I'm kind of at an even wash still. It would be if you all wanted to add these improvements that Education Advisory Board is recommending, then you could choose to do so from your park acquisition dollars.
Mayor, I think we almost have to do this as an exercise, because we have these columns that are very telling with the information.
Yeah, this is not the time to do this.
But, but this needs to be done a lot more specifically. But I also wanted to ask Phil, Phil, why on this sheet that we got, there are 15 on this, when the cam says 12 park improvement projects? There are 15 here. Why? And I'm not including Dandy, even though it's at the end, because Dandy already said, no, they're not going to take anything. But if we move Dandy, and you've got 15 projects here, and the cam says 12 parks improvement projects, so why are we look, I, the math's not adding up. Well...
Or we could go back to what the mayor said and approve everything that was on the original park bond, and if there's money left over, we'll talk to you later.
Well...
So let's ask this question.
Like, I don't see Walker Park on, on cam.
Phil, of the original parks bond list, did that, did...
There are 12 schools listed.
Yeah, wait, wait, wait. I'm just wanting to know, of the original parks bond list, did that list eat up every single nickel of the $200 million? I thought there was still a cushion there.
There was unallocated dollars, about $14 million of unallocated, of the original $200 million. That's been eaten up by...
Acquisitions.
No, that's been eaten up by the Tunnel Top and the Aquatic Center. So the Commission has, has approved park fund, fund dollars going to those projects, and those, that, that ate up the $14 million that was there for the unappropriated.
So there's no longer any, there's no longer any excess funds then?
That's correct.
But again, you, you can, you can change, you have the flexibility to change everything.
Yeah, I get that. I'm just taking it one step at a time. I'm taking it from what Commissioner Maritas started, her, from the argument she's making, and now I'm just wanting to see, okay, if we did fund all the ones that were attached to the, to the bond proposal, did that leave us any money? Yes, it did, but we've already spent that money. So...
We realized it then, and that's why we did that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We have the $7 million a district.
No, this is a different exercise. This is now we're, now we're horse trading here, and it's getting very messy here.
But I, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
And you guys can, you know, vote it up or down, but...
So let's start with something. Go ahead.
Okay. I mean, so I'd like to move that the $1.8, $1,000, $1,870,500 gap...
Hold on, hold on, Commissioner, I'm sorry. Or Vice Mayor. It's $1,087,500.
Yeah, thank you. $1,087,500 between bond project list and the EAB, PRB recommendation, recommended revisions. I'll make a motion that that amount be, that full amount be drawn from District 4 property purchase allocation.
Second.
You know, there's, there's, you can't, it's a resolution. And, and I think that we may have to go back to the devia, the taking that money to allocate it someplace else, we may need to go back to the board to have them look at that before you approve that change.
Wait, you just said we could do anything.
Just said we can do it.
You can, but now, now you're decide, you can, but the bond documents do require a blessing from the Parks Advisory Board.
Okay, great. So we'll, we'll move it, and if it passes, then the board can approve it.
I think they already supported. They already gave us this.
Yeah, I think they do.
I understood, but you're doing something different here. You're taking money from District 4 for acquisition and deciding to, as, as a commission, to to move that into another pot, even though it's all one big pot. But that has to be possibly gone through, again, the advisory board.
Fair, fair enough.
That's fine, but I think we could still pass a resolution and if they choose to, if it has to be ratified by the advisory board, let us do that. I just want to, let's just put some.
Yeah. Yes, agree.
Second.
All right. So, so can I ask one question, please? If, if the idea is, I just want to make sure I understand because we still have the pickleball funding on this same public hearing. I just want to make sure that if this passes and may need to go back to the board or not, can I tomorrow fund the pickleball?
Which, where's the pickleball on here?
The pickleball is the last one on the public hearing and it's, it's in, it's at George English Park and that has already been approved by the board. So it's just part of this public hearing, but I haven't been able to expend those dollars until I get approval on, on, from the commission.
You're just talking about the unsolicited proposal?
No, pickleball, George English. We, we, yeah, we deferred it three times because we were waiting for all the school stuff. It's already part of the 1, 1,080.
But where, where are the pickleball courts here?
George English.
They're, they're, where are they going? They're going to George English Park.
And Victoria Park.
Okay.
It's included in the.
Nothing has anything to do with the unsolicited proposal.
Correct.
It's included in this number, right, that we just got from?
From Ben.
No.
It was not included in the 1,800.
No, that has nothing to do with it. The only reason I bring it up is it's part of this public hearing number two.
But it's funded via something else, the park bond.
It's funded from the George English Park bond.
At District One. Got it, we got it, we're good.
Yeah, it's totally separate. I just want, I just want to make sure I'm clear if I, if, if after this vote tonight, if I can expend that, those dollars tomorrow.
Yes, we'd be very sad if we didn't.
So there's a res, so.
But still, we want clarification, that's all.
Yeah, the, the resolution you have before you has 12.
15.
No, it has 12.
I, I need, I need some clarification here, okay? Please, please. If you look at page two of three of the CAM, and it says, "The following proposed projects were approved for recommendation to the City Commission." There are 12 locations, 15 locations on this, and I, and I just went through them. On the sheet that was, it's not matching, it's not matching.
And, and if we are going to pass it as amended, we need to know exactly what those.
There's an error, there's an error here. That's what I'm trying to say.
I get, I get it, but.
Okay, so how can we do this when, like, we have a sheet here that says Croissant Park?
Okay, so it looks.
2,420, please, 2,420,000. They're not on our CAM for approval tonight. They're just not there. Lauderdale Manners Park, 1,856,000. They're not on our CAM for approval tonight.
Okay.
North Fork, I want to continue, thank you. North Fork School Park, 775,000.
Yeah, we can read.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, how are we moving forward when this conflicting?
All right, so, so let's see, so let's ask Phil, Phil, if you total all the.
Well, first, Mayor, Mike, to clarify, Commissioner, those three parks that he just mentioned have already been to the commission as far as a Phase Two project because those have a different agreement with the, with the, we have parks there now and those were already funded in the Phase Two. So those have already came here and were already done, and so that's why these 12 now have, are bringing, coming forward at this point.
So there were 15 to begin with. We already voted on three, now we're left with 12.
That's correct.
And this is the correct list?
That includes everything. So we included what, what's the three you've already seen and then the, and then the additional, so you know what they.
What three have we already seen, Phil?
Croissant, Warfield, and North Fork.
Wait, Croissant? What about Lauderdale Manners Park? That's on the sheet.
So.
Croissant.
But the total still comes.
Wait, Croissant, what else?
The total still comes to 10,945,200.
That's correct.
Including, so all 15 total 10,945,200.
I understand.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure, so you're saying Croissant is already funded?
It's, it's already come to you, got, gone through the board and to you.
Lauderdale, Lauderdale Manners?
Lauderdale Manners and Warfield.
And Wa, what about Walker?
That's on the new list.
That's on the new list.
What about North Fork Park?
That's on the old list.
That's on the old.
That's part of the three.
North Fork was already approved?
Yes.
No, it's not.
It's confusing.
That's what he just told us.
Let's just go through them one by one.
It's not.
Have a list. We got Croissant.
Well, that, that list is not part of.
We're not ready to vote on this.
It's Croissant, Walker.
This is so convoluted and we're getting so much misinformation, I mean, really.
It's not organized.
Yeah, we're, we're ready, let's just go slow.
Now, the list you're referring to, Commissioner, is not in your backup and that's created by the Education Advisory Board.
That, that's because we've already voted on some of them, that's why it's not in the backup.
What are the sum of them? We were just told it's Croissant, Lauderdale Manners, and North Fork, then we're just told it's not North Fork.
And what about Walker?
It's Croissant, I, I misspoke, it's Croissant, Walker, and Lauderdale Manners have already come to you.
Okay, so now, now we're being told that the three that we already approved are Croissant, Lauderdale Manners, and Walker, not North Fork.
Correct.
Correct, and that's why they're not on our backup. So now let's go through our backup to 12 schools.
Are we sure about that now? Is that the, is that your final answer?
My final, my final answer for, for now.
All right, so now we have 12, we have a million dollars coming from Ben.
You're going to drive us crazy.
We're good.
Okay, so tonight we are being asked to vote on this list minus Croissant, Lauderdale Manners, and Walker because we've already approved those three.
Yeah, and they're.
And the total for all 15 is still not 10,945,200.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On this handout that we got today, tonight, it says Florinata. Now Florinata is not on the list of 12 and it was not just mentioned as already being funded. So what's the status of Florinata for 783,000?
I've, I thought I've always seen that on the list.
Well, it wasn't given to us tonight as one of the 12 on our CAM and it was not just mentioned as one of the four that was already funded. So it's hanging out there from, what's the status of that for 783?
Can you do me a favor?
Why?
Can you count one more time, just check my math? I'm counting, 16.
One, two, three.
Yeah, I, I will, but I just want to know what, what's Florinata's status? They're not on, they weren't, they're hanging out there by themselves with 783. What's the status of Florinata?
Nine, 10.
Well, we need to do it, so let's.
11, 12, 13, I got 13 now.
That's because I just said Florinata is not on the CAM and we were not told that they were already funded previously by the commission. So I, I don't know what else to say.
We already approved, yeah.
What? What? I'm right?
Well, he's saying this list is not 15, it's 16.
16.
Yes.
16 in total, three of our bid guns, 13 left, and Florinata is the Daniel Park.
Yes.
You know what, I think Florinata was on our conference meeting today because I was looking at it during the conference meeting. It was in that backup, it's just not in tonight's meeting.
I just think what we're trying to say is that.
No, it's not.
No, it, no, I was looking at it today.
So maybe what we should do tonight, because we, this is obviously not, this is, is as clear as mud at this point. I tried to craft what I could offer would have been a, how to introduce this resolution, but short of doing that, if somebody would be willing to introduce a resolution that allows the George English project to move forward and that would then be removed from the list and we can tidy this up so that it makes a lot more sense than it's making tonight and we'll bring it back to you at your next meeting.
I think we're almost there, unless you guys are really tired.
But in the meantime, can somebody just tell me the status of Florinata?
It's on, Steve, I'm looking at it.
I do not know.
It's on the conference report.
Not going to be able to.
We discussed it today.
There's no way I can answer it on the fly because I, I just don't know.
Remember, we said on pages 21, 22, 23, and 24, we already looked at all those today and then we added a couple schools and we forgot to take Florinata, which was on the conference report. Go back and look at it, it's from the Education Advisory Board's communication.
Right.
Pages 21 to 24, they're on there, 783, we asked them to bring the full list to us.
Right.
And they just forgot to copy that and put it on it, but we did discuss it today.
But if, if you add that to the CAM, then you have 13, not 12.
Okay, we might have an answer, hold on.
Then we might have 13.
Florinata?
So Susan's telling me that Florinata was approved as well.
It's already been approved.
Oh, it's already been approved. All right, good, then we're all set.
So five were approved, not four.
No, four were approved.
Four, four.
This is a list of 16, so four were approved and now we're being asked to approve 12. And according to, according to the Vice Mayor, he believes that we should transfer monies from the park acquisition fund from District Four to close the gap for Sunrise Middle School. That's where we're at.
Well, it's, it's for all of them, not just, yeah, not just Sunrise.
For all of them. That's where we're at now.
Yes.
Yes, and I, I think we're clear from.
But Dandy doesn't count.
I know, and some of the others don't count.
Yeah.
Danny just said they don't want it, they counted it first.
Okay, so I, I hear there's a motion on the floor and is there a second?
No, it's a resolution.
What's a resolution? So the resolution's been introduced?
And to be clear, the resol, no, but I'm trying to because part of it now may not be funded because we still haven't rectified the money that we're taking from Four. So we're doing the 12 that are listed in Exhibit One of the resolution, is that correct?
We're, we're asking for approval for, for that public hearing.
For the 12?
Yes.
In Exhibit One, and then do we have the full funding for those? Because the shortfall may need to go through another approval process, so I don't know which projects you're going to start. I, I'm just making sure we're clear on what we're passing.
Just those 12?
We want all of them approved with all the recommendations from the Education Advisory Board.
Because you're ready to pull the trigger on some stuff, right?
All, all I was asking for tonight was I'm ready to move forward with the pickleball. I can.
Okay, so as long as we.
Like the city manager asks, or we can move forward, whatever we want to do, but the only one I would like to see moved tonight would be the pickleball.
Well, if we approve all of them, and you can start with George English, you have the funding for that, we just may have to revisit the gap funding for what's missing.
Yeah, great, I, I want to approve all, my motion is all of them.
Let's do it, ready.
My, my motion is for all of them.
All of it.
The motion, what motion?
Where, which item?
I'm, I'm putting forward a resolution that includes all of them.
The 12 on the list.
Which school is a pickleball court under?
George English.
It's, it's not a school.
It's not a school.
It's George English.
It's just part of this public hearing.
Number 12, it's on number 12 on the list.
It's George English.
Yeah, number 12 on the list of, on the CAM and also on Exhibit One of the resolution.
So basically, it's what he said, but 12, because the others automatically drop off because they're funded or either refuse to take services.
I don't see, I don't see George English on this list.
I get it there, Mayor, I see it, page.
Oh, no, it's not on that. Oh, no, it's not on that because then that would be 17. No, it's not on that.
It's, it's on Exhibit One of the, of the resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so what are we voting on tonight?
It's pa, it's page 12 up to 21 on Exhibit One.
The resolution is for the remaining 12.
Okay, and that includes, that includes the reallocation of the park acquisition funds of District Four that will be reallocated to make up the gap for the, the complete funding of these other projects, is that correct?
Correct. The resolution doesn't include that, but we'll see if it's something that we need to bring back as a separate item to fund that gap.
Great.
Excellent. Everyone being funded at the column that says EAB and PRBAB recommended revisions?
Yes.
Yes.
So everyone is getting restored, fully restored?
Yes.
Which was the original EAB communication to the commission today? So that's happening and everyone is getting exactly what was listed in the bond that people voted on.
Correct.
Yes?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
And if the advisory board doesn't come back to us with, with a recommendation to allow for that reallocation, we can still vote for it, correct?
Yeah, yeah, they're just advisory and it may, it may just be a formal, a formal step.
I just want to clarify.
We need to take under the bond documents, so we'll check on that.
Okay.
Got it.
Please call the roll before we change our minds.
Can we just have a, a motion to close the public hearing?
Got it.
What?
Sorry? Motion to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Second.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Maritis?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, public hearing is now closed, the resolution has been introduced by the Vice Mayor, please call the roll.
And it's been introduced as amended.
Correct.
As amended, yeah.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a recommendation from the Parks, Recreation, and Beaches Advisory Board to authorize 12 parks improvement projects and financing through the parks and recreation, a general obligation bond series 2022, and delegating authority to the city manager to execute all documents and instruments necessary to proceed with the 12 parks improvement projects pursuant to the terms and conditions outlined in the City of Fort Lauderdale, resolution numbers 18-261 and 20-08, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Maritis?
Yes, just, for the record, though, I just want to be clear, I know, I'm sorry, it is the original, the original vote plus the Education Advisory Board's recommendation. So the original bond vote, right?
Correct.
Plus the Education Advisory.
He's always shaking her head, no.
No, not always, no, sometimes it's less.
I thought it was the original, what we voted on originally, plus what the Education Advisory Board was recommending.
No.
That's, that's why we got to an additional a million.
So there was an original parks bond list.
Yeah.
Then the Joint Use Working Group made their recommendations.
Which took some away and added some.
Which made some adjustments based on the scoring methodology. Then the communities, particularly around Sunrise Middle School and Walker Elementary School, asked to restore some amenities to those projects.
Okay, so you did that.
The EAB asked us to find cost reductions. We went back and we looked at cost reductions, about $350,000, which we were able to restore the amenities at Walker, but couldn't fully cover the additional expenses for Sunrise Middle School turf.
Okay.
about three hundred fifty thousand dollars, which we were able to restore the amenities at Walker, but couldn't fully cover the additional expenses for Sunrise Middle School turf. So what you are just voting on is the original parks bond list minus the allocation for William Dandy, and keep in mind that it's not necessarily the same amenities that are included in each project, but the dollar amount.
Okay, I just want to make sure Sunrise Middle's getting the turf, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Getting the dollar amount.
Okay, yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes.
All right. That was a soft yes, thank you, Ben.
Hi. Okay, okay, all right, moving on to OFR One, this is a first reading of a quasi-judicial ordinance approving an amendment to the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations Regarding Special Sign Districts. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. I have one person who signed up to speak, but for questions only, are there any disclosures? Do we meet on this? We did meet on this, okay. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes, OFR One, hold on one second, this is the new sign district, this was Nectaria, and I met on three twenty-two, twenty-two, and May tenth, no, that's, no, that's today, no, I met on three twenty-two.
May tenth?
Yeah, I know, that's in the future, I don't know.
Okay. Commissioner McKenzie?
I met with a representative.
I also met with, with, I think it was you, yeah, it was you, not Mr. Lockery, yes, Nectaria Chakas, Commissioner Glassman?
I met with Nectaria Chakas on March tenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, so first reading, anyone have any questions? There being none.
What do you need?
Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, establishing the New River Center Special Sign District and amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, specifically Article Three Development Requirements, Section forty-seven dash twenty-two point eight, entitled Special Sign Districts, create a new Section forty-seven dash twenty-two point eight point one, entitled New River Center Special Sign District, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved on first reading, OFR Two, it's the first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, there is a request to defer to May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Move to defer, May seventeen, twenty-twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, before you move forward with that, I actually, I should like to request that you do defer, but defer to June the seventh, please.
Say it again?
Move, uh, June the seventh instead of May seven.
Seventh of June?
Of June, yes, June seventh, please.
Move to defer to June seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, move the seconded to June seventh.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and OFR Two is now deferred to June seventh. OSR One, this is ordinance second reading, ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations relating to landscaping and tree preservation requirements, is request to defer this to when?
This one is May seventeenth.
May seventeenth.
Motion to defer, defer May seventeen?
May seventeenth, the ordinance has been introduced to defer to May seventeenth.
I need a second.
Please call the roll. No, it's an ordinance, you don't.